Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome. I call the meeting to order at 12:31. This meeting is a special committee of the whole meeting to do with the budget for December 1st, 2025. We don't have anybody in the crowd, but if you are, and for those of you online, just be aware that the meeting will be recorded for audio and video record-keeping purposes. Audio and video record-keeping purposes, so. Counsel, we have three here today. I know that Counselor Holoka is en route, but Counselor Walma will not be able to join to us. He had to work today, so. But then, Counsel, any updates to the agenda? Okay. We'll start with Counselor Burnell, seconded by Deputy Mayor. That the agenda for the special committee of the whole meeting with regards to 2026 budget be accepted as distributed. All those in favor? Thank you. Three to zero. Counsel, any possible conflicts due to procurement interests at this time? Seeing any, if they do come up, please make yourselves aware. We do not have any reports of consultants or third parties at this time. Moving us on forthwith to staff reports. Item D1 is consent items. We don't have any for those today. And then, under matters for consideration, item B2.1 is the 2020 draft 2026 budget. So Deputy Cao, I will pass it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll bring up a presentation that we have to go along with the budget documents. Just give us a couple minutes, a couple seconds. Okay, well, thank you, everyone, for joining us today. My name is Haley LeBlond, and I'm the Director of Corporate Services and Deputy Cao and Treasurer for the Township of Tiny. On behalf of senior management, next slide, and all support staff in the budget process, I'm pleased to present the 2026 draft budget. For those of you that aren't aware, the budget process begins in June with reviews and revisions from senior management, and they take place right up until early November. And as you know, it takes many staff members, more than what you are seeing here today, to put together this budget package. Next slide. This year's budget continues to highlight council's strategic priorities and sets the roadmap for future investments in our community. Next slide. The budget addresses the pressures that many municipalities in Tiny, in Ontario, are feeling while aiming to provide exceptional programs and services to our residents. Now, there are quite a few slides within this budget document that I did share last year. They are slides that have to do with what is in a municipal budget and how is it componentized? The legislative requirements for municipal budgets, basis of accounting, and how year-end financial reports differ from the budgets, and key inputs, plans, acts, and regulations. At this time, if council's okay with it, we'll just skip over that part and jump right into the budget overview.
Counsel, anything you'd like to go over on the preamble? Nope? Please continue. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to start on page 18. The Township of Tiny strategic plan that was adopted in 2022 by council serves as the cornerstone for the initiatives incorporated into this base budget. As I mentioned before, the plan does identify key priorities such as shoreline management, asset management, emerging technologies, and implementation of the Parks and Recs master plans, all of which are reflected in this budget. As a township works to address the asset management deficit, the cost of delivering municipal services and programs continues to rise, driven by economic pressures, reduced external funding, escalating capital costs, and the impact of climate change. Balancing these challenges while maintaining a reasonable tax rate increase remains a significant test for this draft budget. Every year, in-year decisions made by council affect the available levy for the following year even before the draft budget is prepared. This often necessitates an increase in the levy to accommodate these changes prior to factoring in economic conditions and other known or anticipated pressures. The addition of new infrastructure annually further compounds these challenges as operational maintenance requirements and their associated costs continue to grow. This draft 2026 budget agenda is broken into the following sections: The Budget Overview, Budget Pressures, Financial Snapshot, Draft Budget Framework, Budget Assumptions, then Debt and Financing, and the Annual Repayment Limit; The 2026 Assessment Base and Taxation Rate and Tax Dollar Impacts; The Draft Operating Summary, a Remuneration Summary; then, we'll go through every departmental summary. Then, we also will talk about asset management and the relation to our 2026 capital budget. Then, we'll do a capital budget overview and go into capital departmental summaries. And we've also included within this budget package individual capital project rationalization forms. We've also provided a high-level five-year capital plan, and we've also included forecasted reserves with a schedule. And then, finally, we'll get into the additional items for council to consider that are on our funding track, tracking list. Next slide. Oh, we went through those slides, Jessica. If you can keep going. Yep, one more. So I'm just going to go over a few of the budget pressures and drivers in this budget. As staff develop the initial budget, various pressures, from economic pressures to third-party contracts like policing, have impacted this budget. Even though there's a 5.08% increase in the non-residential building construction index, which is the index that we measure our costs for capital, even though that's risen, our funding from government sources, from federal and provincial sources, has actually not kept pace. The Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund, or OSIF, was reduced by 10%, which is $88,000 decrease, while the Canada Community Building Fund, which used to be known as gas tax, has remained unchanged. Other pressures are electricity rates are up about 2%, and natural gas rates are up about 10%. Our budgets have been increased accordingly. The township does procure gasoline and diesel at preferred pricing. Unleaded gasoline, which has risen over the last few years, is lower in Q3 by 3.5%, and diesel prices are lower as well, based on actual purchases that the township has made. As a result, our total fuel budgets in this budget draft have been remained at the same amounts. The Canada Consumer Price Index rose by 2.4% year-over-year. In alignment with this increase, staff and full-time council salaries have been indexed at the same rate and incorporated into this base budget. More of that will be discussed under the remuneration section of the budget. There are some major budget cost drivers that are causing the operational service levy to increase by 10.74%, or 1.49 million. At the proposed blended tax rate increase that council has provided, we've come in at 3.95%, which has provided enough funding to cover this levy with a reduction of about 242,000 to fund capital investments. Key contributors to this cost drivers in the operational budget are the Ontario Provincial Police costs, which we've received an estimate from the OPP that it could be up to an 11% increase. They did note to us that we would receive something by November, end of November, and we haven't received anything to date. So the total 11% increase has been captured in the base budget for an increase of $302,000 from 2.748 million to 3.050 million. We've included in the base budget an additional $250,000 for future debt servicing for the Township of Tiny Administration Centre. We've included the additional infrastructure levy, which is based on 2.39% of the 2024 levy for asset management, which is 375,500. We've included, as I mentioned earlier, COLA, COLA for council and full-time at 2.4% increase, and for part-time at 2.32% increase. Again, more of this will be discussed in the remuneration section, but that has a net levy impact of $501,000, and that's net of reserve-funded departments. And then, there is a surplus reduction compared to 2025 at this point in time, where our base budget is $330,000 lower in surplus than it was in 2025. However, as you know, after year-end, we do come back with an adjusted surplus, if there is one that's available. So these significant cost increases increase the gross budget by 1.8 million, and the net of reserve-funded departments 1.75 million. Along with that, there are some projected significant additional revenues that we have built into the base budget. Growth and taxable assessment, we're estimating at about $174,000 in additional tax revenue, and then, an increase in the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund of $146,000 from 1.802 million to 2.034 million. So the net municipal taxation impact of the significant cost drivers, offset by the major revenue increases, is about 1.44 million. The operation net increase alone is 1.49 million year-over-year. This indicates that these significant changes noted above or earlier make up the total levy increase available from the proposed blended tax rate increase, which also means, as I mentioned earlier, there's less available to fund capital in 2026. I'm going to go over the financial snapshot of the budget. In August, following council's review of the 20-year long-term financial plan, staff were directed to prepare this budget with a targeted blended rate increase of no more than 4.3%, between 4 and 4.3%. Throughout September, October, and early November, we engaged in a series of budget sessions to refine both the proposed operating and capital budgets in alignment with this target. The 2026 proposed draft budget not only meets the target rate increase set by council, it surpasses it with a proposed blended tax rate increase of 3.95%. It also includes surplus that can be allocated strategically as the budget process moves forward, ensuring flexibility to address priorities and adjustments. This approach reflects the township's commitment to responsible financial planning and long-term sustainability. The draft budget projects a surplus of 508,000 in operations, which is $338,218. Of that 508,000 has been included in the base budget, and $169,782 is earmarked on the funding gap for council's direction. In the capital section of the funding gap tracking list, there is also a surplus of 340,000, and this is stemming from the elimination of the Midland Septage Wageslaughter Treatment 2025 project. The total remaining combined surplus of $509,782, which is not included in the base budget and listed on the funding gap tracking list, may be allocated at council's discretion to reinstate items that are deferred, to address funding gaps, to support other adjustments as budget deliberations progress, to replenish reserves, or lower the proposed tax rate increase. The blended tax rate increase of 3.95% corresponds to a municipal tax rate increase of 5.72% based on the following assumptions: that the county rate tax rate increase remains at the tentatively approved increase of 3.5%, which at the time of writing our report was still not ratified, and that the province educational tax rate remains unchanged for 2026. No information has been received from the province with regards to any tax rate adjustment at this time. The proposed 2026 tax levy at a blended tax rate increase of 3.95% supports, and again, this is the levy, the net levy, 78% towards operations for a total draft budget of 23.74 million, net operating budget of 15.35 million, and 22% towards capital investment for a total capital budget of 27.64 million and net capital budget of 4.23 million. And just to reiterate, the total gross budget is 46% operations and 52% capital. The draft 2026 municipal levy of 19.58 million supports the 2026 draft budget by functional area as seen in the table before you. So in summary, council's ultimate direction on the final proposed tax rate will be reflected in the total level of service the township provides to its taxpayers. In recent years, there's been challenges to balance and align service levels, asset management investments, strategic and capital project implementation, and future level of reserves in formulating the direction to staff. Any tax rate change must be finalized and finally adopted before issuing 2026 final municipal tax bills, which typically are issued in April. Background information will be presented with respect to operations, remuneration, capital plans, reserve levels, and sources of funding. The challenge of the budget process is to meet the many and varied needs of residents, the strategic priorities of council, and to ensure the township adequately invests in aging infrastructure at a cost that's reasonable to taxpayers. Although it's necessary for staff to provide council with a certain amount of background information and detail for council to make informed decisions, it's important to consider the issues at a high level in terms of strategic priorities and policy as council deliberates on each of the 2026 draft budget items. I'll just pause it there if there's any questions.
Counsel? That's great. Thank you.
I'm just going to go over the draft budget framework, which changed last year, and just to remind everybody how we've put it together. So in this draft operating budget, we have two years, 2026 and 2027, and a five-year high-level capital plan. To achieve the proposed blended tax rate, several adjustments were made to the 2026 original capital that was presented in the staff report CSFIN010-25 in August. So we've included the changes in one column against the original to show council what was deferred. It's important to note that if a multi-year budget is adopted, the municipal act requires that council readopt the budget each year, and that any changes that are required to make the budget compliant with the provisions of the act are to be done at that time. So annual updates provide council the opportunity to adjust the budget and provide flexibility for events and circumstances that require funding and resource adjustments. For the purposes and discussions of this budget cycle, the commentary and information relate to 2026 only. Commentary for 2027 and beyond has not been included. Each of the departmental operating budget has columns to identify the base draft budget and changes that are greater than or less than $5,000. So we start with the proposed budget, then we, sorry, the base budget, which includes in-years from 2025, in-year adjustments in 2025. Then, we added in a column that shows council-directed, so decisions that are already made by council. Then, we have a column that shows service changes. So these are staff-proposed changes to services or activities. Then, we show obligations and other adjustments or realignments, such as legislative adjustments. And then, we have a variance column showing the change from 2025 to 2026. And then, we also have a column at the rightmost side of the spreadsheet that shows items that are currently not included in the base budget but added to the funding gap. And then, the last point, all proposed infrastructure and capital investments are aligned with our asset management plan as we did last year. There is a relationship for each of the capital projects under the rationalization sheets and as well included in the capital summary. And as noted, in 2025, we've removed all of the reserve transfers, or we've moved all of the reserve transfers that relate to capital into the capital section of the budget and out of the operating budget. This now gives a true reflection of the investment that the township makes into capital. But there is one note, any reserve transfers that are from proceeds of disposition, surplus, or recovery revenues will still remain under operations as they are just matching the anticipated revenues from these sources. There are several assumptions. Some of these I've mentioned earlier, but I think they're worth mentioning again, that the operating surplus from the prior year is to be treated as revenue as required by the municipal act. So we have included some of the surplus within the base budget, and the rest of the surplus is on the funding gap for council to decide what to do with. 2025 actual costs are updated as of November 6. The formal assessment role has not been released by MPAC. However, we are assuming that there's, that, sorry, that there is assessment growth in 2025 of 0.092% or approximately 174,000 in additional revenue. So we've added that to our assessment growth for a total estimated levy based on an assessment of $4,552,279 in assessment. And more on this will be talked about under the property tax assessment and the relation to the municipal tax dollar section. Township subsidies and grants that are included in the base budget are assumed to be at the same level as 2025 unless we have received a confirmation that they've changed, like OMPF. And then, at the time of drafting this budget, the Simcoe County has a proposed 3.5% rate increase, and the province has not announced anything, so we're assuming it's the same in order to calculate the blended rate of 3.95%. The next section will go over the debt financing and the annual repayment limit. We've talked about this several times over the past year, but it's worth mentioning again. So council did approve a construction financing loan of $28 million for the construction of the Tiny Township Administrative Centre. Council also approved additional financing for the purchase of the property known as the Axler Property Development Project. So for the purposes of securing financing, the maximum new annual debt servicing costs, so that's principal and interest, that a municipality can borrow and undertake without going to the OMB, which is the Ontario Municipal Board, is based on the annual repayment limit. And this is issued by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing every year. Tiny's most recent ARL is $5,482,000, and we've provided an illustration of what does that mean borrowing with that sort of a levy, or sorry, that payment of 5.482. What kind of borrowing could you get at 5% and 7% interest? But based on debt currently held, and at the time of writing this report, I've provided an adjusted annual repayment limit for 2025, which is 3.8 million. A staff report will be received at the next council following this budget meeting with an adjusted estimated financing cost using present-day interest rates estimates, which has decreased since the estimated 4.71% in the 2024 staff report PWR01324 was used to calculate the estimated future debt servicing costs of the TTAC. It's important to note again that council has not decided on the final financing structure or amortization of future debentures. So again, the adjusted annual repayment limit is shown in the calculation before you with an estimated ending annual repayment limit of $3.8 million. So now, I'll go into anticipated assessment base taxation rates and tax dollar impacts in this budget. this budget. The Municipal Property Assessment Corporation provides the property assessment role return each year in late Q4. And MPAC is responsible for assigning property values, and they are governed by the Assessment Act and associated regulations. I do want to mention that market value refers to what the property would sell for today in the open market as opposed to assessment values, which are valued at what a property would have sold for on January 1st, 2016. Properties that have historically been reassessed on a four-year cycle, however, due to COVID-19, the Province of Ontario froze the cycle, kept the property values at the 26 assessment value. As such, it's important to note that new builds or substantial renovations are assessed at a value that is 2016. In 2023, the Ontario Government filed a regulation to amend the Assessment Act. Further information regarding the next assessment cycle has still not been released. The township does have a unique tax base, which 93% of all of our property assessment is residential, with the remaining allocated to commercial, industrial, farm. Tiny's 2026 anticipated taxable assessment base is over that $4.5 billion, and this includes payment and lieu properties, but not exempt properties. Payment and lieu properties are properties that make a payment to compensate for property taxes that a municipality would have otherwise received if it was not owned by government crown, government or Crown Corporation. The township has several pill properties owned by Federal Government of Canada, which is Canada Post, Giant's Tomb and Hope Island, Simcoe County and Crown Corporation, the CBC. Each year, new growth from the builds and additions through the building permit process adds additional assessment, again, as of January 1st, 2016 values. And this is added to the assessment base, and in-year supplemental revenues are collected. The additional assessment growth forms part of the next year's assessment base. As I mentioned earlier, there's, it's an estimate that we will have 0.092% of our, of growth, which has been added to the assessment base and forms part of the basis for 2026 levies. So this growth equates to an additional $175,000 if there was zero change in the tax rate. And we've included this in the base budget. Using the anticipated assessment base for 2026, for every 1% municipal tax rate increase, municipal tax revenue would rise by about $185,000. At this time, I'll just go through the blended rate tax calculation. So the blended rate is a combination of the municipal rate, the Simcoe County tax rate, and the provincial tax rate, which is for education. The blended rate increase is the actual increase of residential properties tax bill will realize in 2026. So the proposed blended tax rate can be multiplied by a property's 2025 tax bill to calculate the total taxes the property will owe to all three entities for 2026. Again, the municipality collects all of the taxes for the three entities through the property tax bill, but only keeps 48% to fund the entire municipal budget. The remaining 52% is paid out to the county and the province in 35% and 17% respectively. That means for every dollar that we collect through property taxation, 48 cents is retained by the township to support municipal services and infrastructure. The remaining 52 cents is distributed to the county and province. And we've provided an example of what a tax bill looks like after, at $1,000, a residential tax bill and how it's split up, and what 3.95% blended rate looks like at the end of the day. Tax dollar impact in comparison to Simcoe County, we do this every year, and I think it's worth to continue to mention. For 2026, the proposed budget, the blended tax rate increase of 3.95% for every $100,000 in MPAC assessment would be an increase of $2 per month or $24.04 per year in municipal taxes. Property owners can use the blended tax rate increase multiplied by their property's assessment value to estimate their total taxation levy increase for all of the entities. Specifically for the township at Tiny's 26 budget, a 1% tax rate increase for every 100,000 municipal, sorry, an assessment would equal 35 cents per month or $4.20 per year. The average residential property is assessed in, by MPAC in Tiny is 329,000. I do want to note that I have used 350 in previous years, but we have received from MPAC, our average assessment is actually $329,000. So this means that the average residential property would have a municipal levy increase of $6.59 per month or $79.08 per year at the proposed rate. Of the $6.59 per month, the average assessed property, of the average assessed property, $5.14 per month is to support operations and $1.45 is to support capital investments. And in the figure below, if you can just bring up that screen a little bit, Jessica, the figure below just shows the 1% rate by month and by year, and then the 5.72 by month and by year and for the average assessed property. A 1% municipal tax rate is very different across municipalities. Yeah, stay there. The following chart demonstrates a 1% tax rate increase in the 2026 municipal tax dollars across Simcoe County for every $100,000 in MPAC residential assessment. And as you can see, that Tiny still maintains, as of 2025, the third lowest tax rate in Simcoe County. From there, we're now going to go into the draft operating budget. I'll just pause it in case there's any questions on those topics.
Counselor Loca, good to see you. Glad you made it back safe. Any comments or questions, counsel? No, no, everything's going smoothly. Thank you, Deputy Seale.
As noted earlier, in the absence of a levy increase, the cost of maintaining current operational service levels has increased 10.7%, 10.74%, representing an increase of 1.49 million over 2025. As mentioned earlier, too, approximately 1.12 million or 78% is attributed to significant operational changes outside of the rest of the changes in the base budget. We've included that the remaining $340,000 is related to other expenditures and revenue adjustments throughout the operating budgets, as we will show as we go through every department. Included in the summary is the variances between the 2025 budget, which includes in-year adjustments and approvals, and the 2026 draft budget by functional department are noted in Figure 12. Before we jump into each operational department, we're going to go over the remuneration changes. The township at Tiny's 2026 complement is comprised of 82 full-time, which is permanent and contract employees, five council, and approximately 74 part-time seasonal and student staff, and approximately 74 paid-on-call firefighters. For 2026, staff are proposing to add two student recreational labor positions to recreation and special events. The proposed positions are included under the Recreation and Special Events budgets but are listed on the funding gap tracking list for council to decide if they, if they want to pass including it in the 2026 budget. Other remuneration adjustments built into the proposed budget include realignments of existing part-time student positions to align with services and initiatives for 2026. The costs of these realignments are under $8.5,000, and they're included in the base budget. These alignments, realignments are converting the shared summer student position that was previously under the CAO Clerk and Administration budget to a permanent part-time communication assistant at 15 hours a week under the Corporate Services Department. The total net cost after the reduction in Communication Advertising Budget is under $2,000. And then converting two summer programmers and one camp supervisor position to two one-year contract programmer positions. One will be in the new Special Events Budget, and a volunteer programmer, and then a recreational programmer in the Recreation Department. The total net impact of these changes is $6,500. Also included in the base budget is on-call pay added to the Fire Department full-time staff, which is about $11,000 increase. This is to address inequity compared to other departments that receive on-call compensation in the Roads and Water and Parks Departments. Increase in the on-call pay rate, which was implemented in 2014 with a one-time adjustment with COLA in 2024, from $23.68 to $30, aligning with comparable positions in other municipalities, which has an increase to the base budget of $14,000. And then the cost of living increase, which I'll go over now. So student seasonal paid on-call firefighters, we've indexed again by the same rate as minimum wage has been indexed over 2025. So their wages have been indexed at 2.32%, and that's in order to keep our student and paid-on-call firefighters in line with the minimum wage grid. This increase is a net of $35,500 and included in the base budget. Council and full-time staff, in October of 2025, the Municipal Human Resources Network and Treasurers across Simcoe County corresponded about proposed information on COLA. We've even seen some even as of today, they're all ranging in and around 2.5% to 3%. The Q3 2025 Consumer Price Index shows a 12-month trend and a year-over-year change of 2.4%. So based on this information, staff have included in the base budget a 2.4% cost-of-living adjustment for wages applicable to full-time and council. Add a 2.4% increase on salaries excluding benefits, the results in a net budget impact of $218,000, which is comprised of 177 in salaries and 41,000 in legislative benefits. So let me rephrase that because I see an error. So add a 2.4% increase, which includes benefits, it's a $218,000 change. Of this amount, 43,000 of it is funded through reserve-funded departments. So it reduces the impact to the municipal levy of $175,000, which is equivalent to a 0.95% increase in the municipal tax rate. As we did in years past, we've provided other options of cost-of-living adjustments and the effect on the municipal tax rate should council wish to adjust this when we get to the funding gap. Or earlier. So I'll just go over the total changes in remuneration for 2026. So before comparing remuneration changes in the draft budget, it's important to first identify the in-year adjustments that have been increased, which open, which affect the opening 2026 remuneration budget. Legislative benefit adjustments, per the in-year report, is up 10,000. Olmers retro adjustments for paid-on-call firefighters was an increase of 136,000 in the budget. And approve, approval of the wage review compensation was $293,000, which is a full year cost in 2026. So the total opening adjustment to the 2026, where we're starting from, is 439,000 without any changes that we have now proposed in the budget. So the changes that are being proposed within the budget are adding on-call pay to the Fire Department and increasing their pay, which will go from $23.68 to $30, as I mentioned earlier, that increases the base budget by 72,000. The proposed elimination of three part-time STR bylaw positions will save the budget 38,000. Note that this is a reserve-funded department. Change in estimate for paid-on-call firefighters budget, so that will be, we've decreased that by 25,000, and that is just based on our original estimates for paid-on-call firefighters was, we looked at averages over the past five years. The chief and I went through the actual calculation of time spent by the different firefighter levels, and we came up with an estimate that we feel is going to save the budget about 25,000. And then the proposed COLA on part-time wages, an increase of 35, proposed COLA on full-time wages, net of 177, and then legislative benefits on COLA, 41,000. Lastly, there were some split changes from STR positions that were in tax-funded departments. So for example, in the Fire Department, in Bylaw Department, where we've adjusted those positions out of the short-term rental program and back into tax-funded departments, is a net zero at the end of the day because it's just taken from one putting into the other, but the effect on the actual tax levy is a $27,000 increase. So that's, those changes equal 262,000. So in summary, the final 2025 budget, including in-year adjustments, set salaries at 11.53, 11,530,000. After a $290,000 increase for 2026, an additional $262,000 is proposed, bringing the new total increase to 555,000, which projects a 2026 remuneration budget of $11,315,000. Included in the budget documents on Figure 13 is all of the calculations that I had talked about just now in a nice chart so that you can see the change. There's a lot of, a lot of numbers that I talked about, so if you need clarity, it's on Figure 13. And I'll just pause it there if there's any questions.
Counsel, any comments, questions? No, we're seeing none right now, so. Thank you, Deputy Seale.
Okay, next slide. Just, I just wanted to reiterate, of the $555,000 increase, 54, again, 54,000 relates to those reserve-funded positions, so the net taxation impact of all of the remuneration changes is 503,000. There's a little calculation rounding error at the bottom of that chart that's in the budget documents, but should say 503,000 is the effect on the taxation levy, which is equivalent to 2.71% municipal tax rate increase. Okay, we'll jump into the draft departmental operating budget. Again, as I noted earlier, we've noted any of the variances that are plus or minus $5,000 over 2025 into three categories. One that is already directed by council, service changes that staff are recommending or proposing, and then a column that is really outside of our control, which is legislative changes, pressures, or realignments. So the first budget we'll go over, it starts on page, sorry, I missed that one there, 50, and it's the municipal taxation. So under the municipal taxation budget, this is where we show how much in the levy we are collecting, and we do see that at the proposed tax rate, blended tax rate increase, the municipality will increase the taxation revenues by 1.26 million for a total of 19.78 million. And this includes those payment and loos that I talked about earlier, and the assessment growth, which we, which I also mentioned, is 175,000 extra to the proposed levy. Using the MPAC projections, we do estimate our supplemental billings, which means all of the in-year supplemental assessments that come in, that we will receive about the same as 2025's or $200,000. And we have received from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing the increase in OMPF of 146,000 to receive $234,100, which is our major grant that we received from the province to support, it's, to support operations. Taxation write-offs from MPAC or ARB adjustments, again, these are not write-offs that we decide to write off, these are issued by MPAC or the ARB. These we are estimating to be at the same level as in 2025, and we're estimating $20,000. thousand dollars. We've also captured in this budget the estimated savings that we've realized since joining the insurance pool of ninety-nine thousand dollars. You will see this reflected throughout the budget because we do have insurance captured in various places. But we've earmarked in the municipal taxation budget, a transfer to the insurance reserve or a new insurance reserve of ninety-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. And this will help smooth out any sort of increases in future insurance costs or unplanned deductions due to insurance claims. Again, that's just a proposal for counsel to consider. In this report, as I mentioned earlier, we do include an estimated surplus of three-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, but it is a decrease compared, if you're comparing the 2025 budget to now, because we typically come back after year-end with an adjusted surplus, and that's what happened in 2025. So with all of these changes, the net municipal budget outside of the levy is 2.64 million in revenue, which is actually, and on the budget documentation, you'll see a minus nine percent, it should say plus nine percent. So we actually have more expenses on this municipal taxation of two-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand. So I'll just pause it there if there's any questions.
Deputy Mayor, please.
Thank you, through your worship to Haley. The insurance reserve that we're putting in, I believe that is year one of three before we actually start realizing the cost savings of joining the Simcoe County Insurance Pool. Is that correct?
That's, that's exactly how I understand it. Yes, that's, the projections that they've provided is, yeah, the first year of three.
Perfect, thank you.
Good, good question. Counsel, any comments? No, I think we're good. Deputy Cao.
Okay, the next budget starts on page fifty-three, and it's the debt financing budget. So this budget is a net budget of nine hundred thousand dollars, a change of thirty-eight point five percent or two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars over 2025. To ensure that there's enough funds built into the base budget for debt, future debt servicing costs for the township at tiny administrative center, an additional two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars has been earmarked in this budget as a transfer to the debt financing reserve to continue to build it. The total levy related to the TTAC for debt financing in 2026 will be nine hundred thousand. As mentioned earlier, the total debt financing payment will be calculated at the time of debentures and will vary based upon council-directed repayment timelines, which are a number of years, and interest rates at that time. Of note, since staff report PWR-01324 was written, which included the estimated debt financing, interest rates have continued to decrease. Currently, the project is funded by a construction loan at a floating rate interest, interest rate. Interest costs for the construction loan for 2026 is estimated at five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, which will be drawn on from the debt financing reserve. This estimate is based on the construction timeline provided by Bertram Construction Manager at Risk and resulting anticipated drawdowns on the construction loan. Included in this budget is also the financing costs on the Axar Property Development Project, which was approved in year. Estimated interest costs for 2026, and it should say one-hundred-and-sixty-six nine fifty, not one-sixty-six five hundred, will also be drawn on the debt financing reserve. However, it's anticipated this, this project will realize revenues in 2027 to replenish the debt financing reserve for this, for these borrowing costs. And I'll just pause it there if there's any questions.
Comments on debt financing, gentlemen? No, I think we're okay. Thank you, Deputy Cao.
Okay, the next budget is the mayor and council budget, starts on page fifty-six. And the net budget is six hundred and four thousand dollars, a change of 1.1 percent or seven thousand dollars. So in general, council's expenditures have been kept in line with 2025. However, there are some adjustments that are worth noting, and again, we're trying to keep our comments to any of the variances that are over or under five thousand dollars. So all of the remuneration adjustments that we talked about earlier in the remuneration section account for a net increase of ten thousand dollars. However, it's important to note that there are some salaries that were allocated to council's budgets by recreation staff that have now been moved out of council's budget and back into recreation or the new special events budget, and that is a change of a negative fifty-eight thousand dollars. There's also been a reallocation of the Affordable Housing Initiative grant from the CAO budget into the council budget of ten thousand dollars. Funding to organizations are supported at the same level as in 2025, but anything that is, any of the requests that came in that were over and above their 2025 amount or new requests have been added to the funding gap for council to talk about later. A total of fifty thousand dollars has been allocated to funding to organizations, and they are funded as follows. Georgian Bay General Hospital Foundation, twenty thousand. Physician Recruitment Program, twelve thousand. Community Reach, seven and a half thousand. Bay Shore Seniors, six thousand. Georgian Bay Seniors, eight thousand. And Wheels for Wheels, five thousand. As in years past, we recommend funding Community Reach and Wheels for Wheels from the Accessibility Reserve, which is twelve thousand five hundred. And this is because they provide accessibility programs to the community. Also note, the two senior active living center budgets, which were previously underfunding to organizations, have now been separated out of the funding organization section. And the reason for this is to track the in-kind donations that the township provides to them through staff time, not just the cash donations. In the previous budgets, we tracked just cash, now we are going to start tracking the in-kind, and that's just to align with the grant requirements, and it's easier for submission for that purpose. The public relations budget has been reduced to eight thousand, and twenty-three has been, twenty-three thousand has been reallocated to a community barbecue project to track the costs with this event directly. So again, we're pulling it out in order to clearly track what the costs are for that bud, for the barbecue. The remaining budget is for council attendance at community events and a contingency.
Comments, questions, counsel? Deputy Cao, I have one with regards to, if you could go back, actually, that slide and the one before, is with regards to senior active living centers, the Bay Shore Seniors and the Georgian Bay Seniors. I wonder if you could just clarify, on this side, we have two amounts, and on the next slide, two amounts, are those included each other, or are they over and above?
Okay, so the one that you see on this slide here, those are the cash donations that we traditionally give to those, those organizations. And then if you go to the next slide, this is so that we can track the in-kind. So the difference that you're seeing here is, the variance is the in-kind portion. So that's the staff time that's spent on these, these projects.
Okay, I just want counsel to be aware, so that if we took Georgian Bay Seniors as an example, there's eighteen point five, and on the previous slide, I believe we had...
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand.
Yeah, so.
So ten thousand five hundred of it is in-kind support.
Yes, exactly.
Great, thank you. Just want to clarify that, please.
Okay. The next budget that we're going to talk about is the special community events budget, which has been decreased by sixteen thousand dollars. And this budget is for tree lighting. Carnival and new events, these line items have been now moved to the special events budget over in recreation, which we will get to, which is under 01711. So we'll get to that one. But there's been a lot of realignments and movement, which has decreased and increased in different places, but we're trying to outline where they are going. The township-sponsored events budget is held at similar levels and includes staff labor. Events include Fêteé Saint Jean Baptiste, Terry Fox, Lions Club Plolar Dip, Palm Beach Summer Events, Bustle Dusk, Festival de Lou, Fêteé des Drappes, Noel de Village, Special Olympics Softball Tournament, Lions Club Easter Egg Hunt, and Wyveille Santa Claus Parade. All of the committees of council are, are held at the same level as in 2025. However, due to no activity with the Youth Advisory Committee in 2025, the unspent budget of ten thousand has been recognized to support the 2026 budget by utilizing surplus. The newly renamed Township at Tiny Events and Charities Committee, previously known as the Mayor's Charity Golf Tournament Working Committee, has a decrease of 2.6 thousand and a goal of forty-one thousand two hundred and fifty in donations to local charities with the golf tournament proceeds. Since inception, the golf event has raised over five hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred and seven dollars and eighty-two cents. That has been donated back to local charities and programs that benefit tiny residents. And new for 2026, the committee has earmarked a charity pickleball tournament, which was passed at the September seventeenth council meeting. The anticipated donations to local charities are fourteen thousand five hundred, with the cost of the event covered by the registration fees and other revenues of the charity pickleball tournament.
Counsel, any comments, questions? Sorry, just, I'm just going to harp on it again, then. Previous slide, those, the donations, are those monetary or in-kind? Does that include both? The first status quo budget, the forty-three thousand, including twenty-six thousand, thousand of which supports, are those in-kind or monetary?
Yes, that includes in-kind time spent by staff.
Okay, perfect. Just want to make sure everybody's clear on that. Good, thanks. Comments, questions, counsel? We're good? Okay. Haley doesn't have time to have her water either. Oh my gosh.
It's a lot of talking.
It must be.
Okay, then the next budget that we'll go over is the CAO Clerk and Administration Budget, which starts on page sixty-four. So this budget is a net budget of 1.31 million, which is a change of, an increase of 5% of their budget or sixty thousand dollars. As noted earlier, remuneration judgments account for most of the increase in this budget, meaning that there's been a budget decrease in the rest of the items. Further, we are allocating, or we've allocated a student position from this budget over to Corporate Services, which has reduced this budget by twenty-three thousand dollars. Adjustments over 2025 worth noting, the Affordable Housing Initiative, as I mentioned earlier, was reallocated to council's budget. The Corporate Wellness Program has been moved out of Health and Safety, which is, which is its own budget within this budget, to the general expense area, but it's maintained at the same level. So there's a net zero change. Advertising has been reallocated to HR, and of three thousand, and Communications, which is under Corporate Services of two thousand. Insurance costs, as mentioned earlier, you can see the decrease in this budget of six thousand. Legal fees have increased by five. Corporate training and computer hardware have also been decreased by 2.5 and 2.7 respectively. The first year operating costs of the new Human Resources Information Management System are now captured here, which is ten thousand dollars. And HR consulting has been reduced due to the completion of the 2025 wage review. Just pause it there if there's any questions.
Comments, questions? So I'm just trying to find the, the legal numbers, Deputy Cao.
It's on page sixty-four, about halfway down.
Hundred and eleven, okay.
Hundred and fifty-five thousand for 2026.
Hundred and fifty-five thousand. Okay, with only a five thousand dollar increase.
Five thousand dollar increase.
Okay. That was my only question.
There are some legal costs in other budgets, but it's pertaining to those specific budget, you know, projects and things like that. But this is where we capture the majority of the legal costs.
Okay, okay. Any other comments on this one, counsel? Seeing none, okay, move forward.
Okay, the next budget is Corporate Services, starts on page sixty-eight. The net budget of Corporate Services is 1.25 million. It's a change of 10% increase, and it's a hundred and ten thousand dollar change. Corporate Services does include asset management, communications, finance, and IT. So remuneration adjustments, as noted under the remuneration section of the budget, account for the majority of the increase in this budget, which remuneration has changed by one-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand five hundred, and includes the reallocation of the student position, as I talked about earlier, which increased the budget 23,000. So this means that the remaining budget has had a net decrease over 2025. So some of the adjustments worth noting, hydro has been realigned throughout the budget to reflect actuals. Thirty thousand dollar increase in penalty and interest revenues on tax arrears. An increase in the annual software costs for the financial system and budgeting software of six and a half thousand combined. Asset management consulting fees have been decreased, as it was a one-time project that was carried over from 2024 and completed in 2025. A decrease of five thousand dollars in information technology expenditures, a decrease of nine thousand in communication general expenditures, where seven and a half relates to advertising to align with our actual needs. And the deferral of the IT Master Plan Connectivity Project, which was earmarked for cloud-based evaluation by consultants, which was a ten thousand dollar project with a zero impact because it was using carryover funds. It is planned that the evaluation will instead be completed in-house by staff, and the disbursement of funds will be planned in future initiatives. Sorry, my correction, it was a net zero because it was funded by a computer reserve, not surplus. So the money will just stay in the reserve. Just pause it.
Comments, questions on this one? Deputy Mayor, please.
Thanks for your worship, Haley. The increase of six and a half thousand to the finance software, is this all due to the Great Plains migration because they're kind of folding that, that software program? Is that part of it, or is there still more to come on that, that migration piece?
Yeah, so the migration piece is, is projected in the capital for 2026. We haven't actually started that project. This is just our regular annual increases. We do also have a budgeting software that we started using a few years ago, Questica, so it's just their annual increase in costs. So unfortunately, yeah, no, this is still great.
Not part of the migration, it's in capital? That's right, I saw that, okay. Thank you.
Comments, questions, counsel? Deputy Cao, I have a question with, I think it falls under Corporate Services, but with regards to the ice storm that we had in April, have we applied for, been successful for any support? I know that neighboring municipalities have received some funds, both from the provincial Ice Storm Assistance Program, I believe it's called, or that, that, and on Hydro One as well. I wonder if we have, and what, any progress we've had so far.
Yeah, thank you for that question. So we actually separated out in this budget, and we'll get to that, a new, a new budget that we can then start to track all of the costs associated with any sort of major events like, like the ice storm. And we have applied for the municipal ice storm grant. We have not received any confirmation yet back from the, from the government, but, but we do anticipate that we will see that money.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other comments, questions, counsel? Okay, we're good.
The next budget is elections, and this budget is on page seventy-two. And the election budget is a net budget of thirty thousand dollars, a decrease of 6% or two thousand dollars. And the election budget does reflect the approved motion from May fourteenth, from council approving the voting method to be by internet and telephone. And the cost of the elections are planned to be funded by the Election Reserve, which has at the end of 2025, a hundred thousand dollars set aside. So a transfer also is included for the 2030 elections to the reserve for twenty-five thousand dollars.
Comments on this one, counsel? And do we have all of our costs in, or firmed up for the new voting method, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, not at this time, although a report will be coming to council shortly with RFP results.
So still within the budgeting timeline then? Okay, great. Okay, thank you. So we just changed the allocation, you've got a hundred thousands from the last three years, I believe, right? So thirty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars a year. Okay, okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay, any other comments, questions? No, that's great, Deputy CIO?
The next budget is the policing budget, which starts on page 74. As of writing of this report, and still as of today, we still have not received our municipal policing statement from the Ontario Provincial Police for 2026. But we have noted that the cap that they have given us, which could be up to 11%, has been built into this budget of a $302,000 increase, and which is equivalent to 1.64 municipal tax rate increase. The only other significant budget change is the removal of the operating surplus that was related to 2024 and used in 2025 for the Police Services Board is no longer available. So this actually increases the budget by $15,000. And then just to note, the budget for paid duty, for paid policing duty for long weekend traffic, duty trails enforcement, beach patrols, and traffic enforcement remains unchanged at $24,000. And the budget for paid duty for ride program also remains unchanged. And as such, the grants from the Solicitor General and the Court Security have been remaining unchanged as well.
Counsel, any comments, questions? Don't want to put you on the spot, Deputy CIO, but could you compare our accrued OPP costs for 2026 versus our actuals for 2025?
Yes, so thank you for that. We get billed quarterly, and so the last quarter of 2025 has not been received at the time of us issuing this report.
Okay, what I'm looking for is the difference. Based on our assumed 11%, what was our comparative for 2025?
It was $2,747,000.
For 2025?
Yes, which is a difference of $3,000.
What are we looking at for 2026?
We are looking at $3,049,000.
That's what I'm looking for, and do we have a percentage increase on that?
Yeah, 11 is what we've capped it at.
I just want to make sure everybody's aware. I, we've been talking about, it's 11%, but I want people to know even last year, that when we got our municipal assessment, it came back and it went up 2.6, if I'm top of my head?
I don't recall that exact percent. No, initially it was very high, and then they came back at an adjusted.
Right, reflecting, and I want the public to know, this is calculated based on the number of residences, which, as you mentioned, in Tiny has not changed, I would think, at all or appreciably, over year over year in calls of service. And that's really why our amount last year in 2025 went down. And our core services, i.e. paid duty, paid duty ride, trail support, given that we have a lot of snowmobile trails, as we're keeping the same services to the public. But now we've been projected to go up 11% compared to last year, which was roughly, what, a fifth of that, to call it a ballpark? And we've seen no appreciable difference in terms of service or support. Now, given, you're right, we still haven't gotten the final number yet. So, but I would hope to see that, you know, our OPP number is much closer to 2.7 that you mentioned we pay this year versus 3.05, given that, sorry, status quo is pretty much status quo year over year. Nothing has changed that much. So I just want the public to be aware of this. This is, you know, $302,000 is one of our biggest swings, right? So this is really up in the air still, and it'd be pretty upset if they came back and it still was 11%. I don't know how you can justify raising something when it was 2.6 last year, and now it's 11. And that funding or revenue structure that they use is the same for the whole province. So I'm actively and eagerly anticipating their response on that. Counselor Holka, please.
Yes, through your worship, so to the Deputy CAO, do we know if this is a generic percentage that they have told every one of the 444 municipalities?
So I'll take that through you, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, please. So all of the municipalities that are policed by the Ontario Provincial Police receive notification that we will get our bills soon. So it's not all 444, it's whoever the OPP actually are, the detachment for. And we were advised that there would be a cap of, or an increase of up to, and the term was up to 11%. So all we can do is budget accordingly. If council remembers last year, and I'm going off the top of my head, so forgive me, but we had received originally a notice of almost a 25% increase last year. A lot of municipalities very quickly raised alarm bells with the province. The province stepped in, and I believe, I want to say it was around 4.6% cap at that time on last year's bill. And the actual billing for each year, so this is 2026, we will actually know what this year's policing costs will be when we get our billing notice in 2027, because it takes two years for them to ratify all the calls per service and the base costs and the rest of it. So we won't actually know based upon, you know, the mayor's comments about actual service, what the service level was provided on the calls and the cost of all those calls on an annual basis until they do the reconciliation when the invoice is in 2027. Because when we get this year's invoice, there will also be the reconciliation from 2024. So it's literally a two-year delay all the time as to actual versus what they projected the invoice would be. The other thing I point out to counsel in this budget, we have allowed $25,000 for our contribution to the detachment board costs with the elimination of the individual police service boards, which we used to have one. There is now a regional detachment board, which ourselves, Tay, Penetang, Machine, Midland, and Georgian Bay Township, there's the five municipalities that fund that detachment board. Also, based on the legislation, that board will present its budget to the local municipalities, and they tell you what it is, and we have to pay it unless we want to try to take it to an arbitration board if we disagree with what that assessment is. We've allocated, we paid $25,000 last year. Every indication is, is everybody's kind of budgeting $25,000 again for this year. But the actual board, once they have finalized budgets and rest of it, will then be letting us know. So hopefully the $25,000, again, that's a budget amount we've earmarked, and we assume it's going to be right. But it, there could be some variable on that, that we don't have much say other than two votes at the table with our representatives, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, worship.
Counsel, Deputy Mayor, please.
Thanks through your worship to the Deputy CAO. So if I'm understanding this correctly, the policing cost is approximately 28% of our net budget?
Yeah, it is the most significant third-party cost in our operating budget.
So 28 cents out of every dollar is going to OPP, more or less? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other comments, counsel? Policing, Counselor Holka, please.
Yes, through your worship. Deputy Mayor's assessment of 28 cents per dollar, and we have absolutely no control over that. We get a bill and we pay it, correct?
That is correct, CAO. And we have zero input as to how it's calculated, what goes into it, what the negotiations are. So if they do a settlement with officers, which is one of the biggest driver increases, that is the single biggest complaint the local municipalities have, is we're not at the table doing any of that negotiation, yet we're handed the bill at the end of it saying here, you need to pay it, so.
Yes, thank you, that's where I was going with this, thanks.
Okay. Deputy CAO, please.
No, I was just going to clarify, last year our increase went up 3.5%.
Okay, 3.5, and we're accruing for 2026 of 11%.
11.
Okay, keep your fingers crossed. Counsel, local behalf, yeah, good.
The next budget is the Emergency Planning Budget, which is on page 76. The net budget for emergency planning is $168,000, which is an increase of 9% or $13,000 over 2025. And the majority of the change is related to the remuneration adjustments, as we noted earlier, under the Remuneration Section of the budget. I'll just pause it there.
Questions on this one, counsel? Counselor Holka, please.
Yeah, and just so everybody knows that through our fire department, our great fire department, we have done presentations on emergency preparedness, and we are trying to get to every citizen that resides in this township for them to look out for their neighbors. And anyways, this is a needed step as far as this budget goes, emergency planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Holka, any other comments? I'm a little concerned over this one, just in the fact that, I guess it's, nobody knows for sure what's going to happen in the future, obviously. But last year we spent, this is dark blue, dark blue, $199,000, our 25 actuals. And now we're budgeting $168,000. I know that, almost, is Director Leach questions, because I know that you implemented, we had a number of charges in there, like the new electrical in Wybridge and the building. And how much of that $199 is? I'm going to assume that we have another ice storm. I hate to say it, but I think we have to assume we have another ice storm. Are we going to be spending $199,000 again? Or are we going to be spending $168 based on one-time charges that we had to implement? Like we'd never had a warming center, or we'd never had people in the, in the facilities at night, that type of thing. So I'm just concerned about the difference there of $199 to $168. Deputy CIO?
Sorry, if I can just clarify, so the purpose of this budget is really tracking the time spent by the emergency services under the fire department. This is not the section that we were talking about earlier with the municipal ice storm grant, for example. That'll be on the next one that we're coming up to. So this more under the direction of the chief.
Okay, perfect. CAO?
So just so the public is aware, we are legislated to do a certain amount of training every year, and not just an exercise. Most of your senior leadership plus other members of the team have to take mandatory training every year. So this is all the cost of us being just trained and trying to be ready to respond to emergencies. So we will often have full-day mock scenarios in which we literally have to try to work the emergency. And it falls under the fire department to coordinate. And this is obviously a lot more than just, it is a certain percentage of a full-time position to just make sure we are staying in compliance with provincial legislation and ensuring that all of us are trained at the appropriate level and making sure that any new staff that come in also are getting all the requirement training and even members of council at time taking the training. So this is, this is just the cost of trying to be ready. It's not even the cost of responding.
Okay, thanks for clarifying, perfect. Any comments on this portion then, counsel? Okay, so we'll move on, Deputy CIO?
Okay, the next budget is the Incident Management Response Budget that we were just talking about, so that's on page 78. And the purpose of this budget is to respond and track the costs of a major response to an incident. As we noted with COVID and now the ice storm, it's really good to track these costs in their own budget, even though that there is no actual budget for 2026. It's just a placeholder to track the actual costs associated with time, labor, expenses, so that we can submit for grants if we need to, and also to show council and the public how much time and efforts this costs the township when it's unplanned for. So for 2025, we talked about the municipal ice storm. So we have submitted for a grant. We are hopeful that we're going to get about $70,000. But as you will see from this budget, we're showing the actuals. It's about $200,000 in actual costs that we've tracked towards this ice storm, of which we anticipate getting about $70,000 because not everything is eligible for the grant.
Okay. Comments, questions on this one, counsel? Just, I assume the other part is coming from reserves? You over and above?
So this will be one of those calculations that we'll wait till after year-end to see what the surplus is. And when we come back to council, we'll show what the deficit is in this type of a situation compared to the surplus, and then any remaining amount. And if we don't have as much of a projected surplus than what we're anticipating, then we will likely have to take it from reserves.
Okay. Okay. Good, you move on.
If I may just add one more point. A lot of that is made up of salary time, so it's time that staff have spent its overhead. Either way, it would have been an expense to the township except for overtime, which is an added expense.
Okay, good. Counselor, please.
Yes, your worship, just as a recap to point this far. So we retain 48 cents of every tax dollar collected, correct?
That's correct.
And we give 28 cents of that 48 cents to the OPP, correct?
No.
Okay.
Let me just calculate that quickly.
Did the quick math, 22 cents maybe, 12?
About 15 cents.
Okay, fif, so.
Of our total dollar, sorry, just a second. Times 48 cents, so about 7.2 cents of the 48 cents.
Okay, so one-seventh goes to the OPP. Roughly.
Yeah, because we are collecting around $20 million, right? So 48 cents. So if you take the 15, so it's about 15 cents of every, 15% of the 48 cents is going towards policing.
Thank you very much.
Good, okay. Counselor Bernal, please.
We thank you, just addressing a comment that you made about, prior to this section, should we be allocating? Because if you're going to be on assumption that there's going to be another ice storm this year, should we be allocating a number for the 2026 draft budget?
CAO?
Yeah, through you to Counsel Bernal. It's a good question, but we've, we actually had that conversation internally, and we actually, at this point in time, don't recommend it. It's really hard to set aside taxation dollars in case something happens like this event, because you never know what that number should be. And we, you know, we can look at our number and actually say, you know, thank God, compared to some of our neighbors, we got off really lightly. And an event hits, we respond to it. To me, the bigger budget to make sure we have money for it is the planning one, so that we actually can respond as quickly and efficiently. There will also be potentially in some of the capital items that have been on the capital budget, and a few that even potentially might be deferred, things like emergency backup generators, so type of things that actually allow us to respond to emergencies that, you know, would be good to have those conversations around when we get to those items. But it is really hard to just put a figure in because we don't know what form that will take and how much that would be.
Counsel?
Thank you.
I think it's an interesting theoretical discussion from a budgeting perspective, because you, you know, you can go and accrue for a specific incident management and response. That's why I mentioned reserves and what type of reserve we have. Whereas, you know, the problem with that, you're locking away, say we pick $200,000, and all of a sudden, to your point, CAO, we don't use it. Well, we've just done ourselves a disservice because at the same time, we could have used that money somewhere else, maybe to make more money. But if we have a reserve fund of some sort, that we'd be able to access that and make sure that we, I think we should be making sure that we have the foresight to include that in a potential reserve, so it is there or we have access to it. So we're not, again, I knock on wood that it doesn't happen, but given the current environment, you, I think we have, we have to be proactive in foreseeing that this may happen again. And how would we, did a great job with it, and we've learned a lot from it, both systemically and organizationally. But what will we do better the next time it happened? And hopefully that we don't have to use it.
Yeah, one of the learning things that we've got from this and reflected on is we have now established in our HRIS, our, like our time-tracking system, budget code. So the minute if we were to be into an event... So the minute if we were to be into an event, we can send out to everybody, Director Leach's team, the fire chief's team, even human resources or finance, so we can actually assign a separate set of codes instantly to those expenses, rather than then also taking the time afterwards to try to go back and to separate them all out and how do we justify it? Because one of the things that you are required to do is obviously, if you're going to receive potentially revenue back if you had a declared emergency from the province, is you need to be able to track all of these things, have the invoicing for it. So this, our incident with the ice storm has actually got it, so we now have them set up in both our purchasing side and our human resources side, so we can instantly assign that code to it and start to track things, rather than trying to figure out on the fly how we're going to track it. So that was one of the good, I don't want to use the term lesson learned, because we did it in the middle of it, but we didn't now have to put our mind and resources to getting that set up. That's why we created this.
And obviously, you've got them in a different ledger, so they're not on their regular ledger, so we are picking up there to a certain degree as well.
That is correct. So in an ideal world, at this time next year, we have no incident, you will see under 2026's zeros down there, because we didn't have any reason to be tracking that information.
Okay, thank you, Deputy CIO. Counselor Loca, are we, everyone good with, sorry, we finished on incident response. Before we get into fire, can we take a brief break? Say 10 minutes, we'll come back at 2:10. Moved by Counselor Loca, seconded by Counselor Misskemans, that we recess, sorry?
Counselor.
So, oh, Deputy Mayor, sorry, sorry, sorry.
1:50.
At 1:57 PM. All those in favor? Thank you. Sorry. But. Thank you, Tina. We're back. Motion for, moved by Counselor Burnell, seconded by Deputy Mayor Misskemans, that we reconvene at 2:10 PM. All those in favor? In queue? And we left off just in advance of fire, I believe, Deputy CIO, so I'll pass it back to you.
Okay, great. We're going to start on page 80. The budget starts on page 80 for fire. And the budget, the net budget for fire is 1.5 million, which is a change of 5% increase or $67,000 over 2025. Some of the noteworthy adjustments that are included in this budget are the fire permit fee revenue is earmarked at $10,000 higher for a total of $160,000. Fire cost recoveries, which are transferred to the fire capital reserve, are anticipated to be $5,000 higher for a total of $30,000. Just for your information, the 2025 fire cost recoveries are exceeding the budget by $78,000, so this will all be earmarked for the fire capital reserve. There's also $5,000 in proceeds of disposition, which is expected, if received, these will also be directed to the fire capital reserve. And then there is a net decrease of $30,000 in remuneration due to all of the adjustments that we noted in the remuneration section, but I do feel it's necessary to point them out here because there is a reduction. So that is, again, the net. So some of the changes are remuneration adjustments with regards to the council wage review is a $21,000 increase. Alignments with township positions that are on call 24/7, as I mentioned earlier, are an increase of $11,000. Reallocation of split time from the STR department back to the fire department increases this budget by $9,000. Bylaw grid changes, proposed COLA and legislative benefits are $62,000 increase. Revised estimate in paid-on-call firefighters, again, I described this adjustment earlier, it's just a better estimate. So we've actually reduced paid-on-call firefighter remuneration by $25,000. And then participation in OMRs for paid-on-call firefighters is estimated to increase about $28,000. And just to recall, in 2025, council did approve a one-time retroactive OMRs contribution of $136,000, which was funded by the fire reserve. So that one-time funding from the fire reserve is not available for 2026, which results in a net decrease of $108,000. So that's why there is an actual decrease in remuneration over 2025. So there was a one-time increase in 2025 for employee recognition awards for paid-on-call firefighters, and we've now put it back to previous levels, resulting in a $33,000 decrease. And then, again, the reduction on insurance is evident in this department, which has a decrease of $15,000. And then regular maintenance and repairs, as well as operating costs on fire fleet, which is contained in this budget, has a modest increase of $8,500 for 2026. So that's the summary of fire.
Thank you, Deputy CIO. Deputy Mayor, please.
Thank you, through you, Your Worship. The fire cost recoveries, is this things, or does it cover things like false alarms? And what makes up these fire cost recoveries, just out of curiosity?
Through the charge of the Deputy Mayor. That's exactly correct. False alarms, MVCs for nonresidents, burning and noncompliance, they're all listed in the fees for recovery by law, and then I apply that by law to incidents that are in accordance with that.
That's great, and thank you.
Counselor Loca?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. Just to follow up, Chief, so if a neighbor calls 911 on another neighbor that they're not getting along with, after you assess the entire situation, you may put a fire cost recovery. the entire situation, you may put a FIRE cost recovery on that initial 911 call? Is that?
Through the chair, to the chancellor. That's possible, absolutely. In my time with the FIRE department, I have not run into that, where we have had a habitual situation where we've had a neighbor dispute. Typically, if we run into something like that, we would have a discussion with the initiating caller, see if we can resolve it. But yes, if, if we had a nuisance caller, that could be applied in that manner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, your worship.
You're welcome. Councilor Brunel, please.
Thank you through you, Chair, to Director Laban. If you can just remind me, we went retroactive on the OMRs contribution, retroactive to what date?
It was 2023.
Thank you. Follow-up. Is that January 1st, 2023?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And is that, just, if I could, Deputy CIO, just a couple of questions myself, just building on Councilor Brunel's. Does this reflect, or what was our participation rate with the, with the OMRs? Was this, I don't assume it's 100%, but is there a rough number? How many people?
Actually, I, I know now the participation rate has risen since our initial estimate. I believe it was 65% originally. It's 80% has participated at this point in time.
Good. So Chief, it's a success then. Good. So the, the value of the program is, is evident. Okay, good. And I have one other question, just through the, to Chief, I guess, about the, the one-time, sorry, we called it, the recognition, call firefighter recognition awards back to previous levels. Does this represent, I know at our, our Good Evening on Thursday night, you were, there was a number of people that had already met their, their plateau level from previous years. Does this, I just want to make sure that going forward that we have the same awards and that continues untouched?
Yes. So the, the one-time bump up, if you will, for, for 2025 was retroactive so that we could get all, all members brought up to date with the, the enhanced awards that council had approved last year during budget. And we have ensured that we have in the budget for this year for our recognition, those new awards. And as I had presented last year during the budget time, like I think this year, it would be about $2,200 in excess of what we would normally do, and the same for the following year. So we are continuing those items.
Okay, good. Yeah, I want to make sure we continue with that. Just, just from pure budget perspective, I think those awards were very much valued and appreciated. Some very unique items that, unique to the firefighting community and the patches and the helmets and the radios and holders and things like that. So they were, and just comment for us in budget that that was, was a big, big, very well appreciated. So thank you to council and the community for providing that last year. And I'm glad that we're continuing forward unchanged. Thank you. Any comments on FIRE? Councilor Locat, please.
Yeah, through you, your worship. I want, I want to reiterate that. I said my regrets. I could not attend Thursday. I was out of town. But the, the fact that there's so much value to our firefighters, that is a lot unseen unless it happens to you. But I just, I just want to add that there's a lot of pride within our firefighter volunteer department. And for, for council to step up and just ensure that the appropriate recognition goes on is important to me and it's important to a lot of people that I talk to on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Locat. I have one more item pertaining to the budget that I wanted to bring up. Last year, we saw a much higher incidence of wildfires in southern Ontario, and one that was really about an hour and a half away that went on for a few days over by Kenmount. And I just wondered if we're, if there's, is this something that is, we're in a good position with right now with this current budget? Or are there any, I know kind of the answer to this, but any unique equipment that's required for wildfires, given that we do have a fairly sizable Simcoe Forest and township forest here in Township of Tiny?
Yes. We haven't allocated any extra funding for, within this year's budget for wildland firefighting. We continuously train forth within our annual schedule. We continuously send individuals that are interested on extra training, if you will, to become certified. We do, we are one of the host communities within Simcoe County, the host, one of the county caches that consists of a wildland pump and some hose packs. And we do have our own contingent, basically the duplicate of that. So we have a cache of that north and south. We have a brush truck that allows us access into tighter areas and along with our gators. So we're about as well-prepared as we can be. Knock on wood that we don't have a major event here, but hopefully it's a nicer, wet summer.
Well, let's not say too wet, but at least we, we've got lots of water for the CL-14, 415s to come down on. So, Counselor, please.
Yes, I'd just like to add that there's a tremendous cooperation, level of cooperation with the surrounding FIRE departments, with all of us, Township of Tiny included. And that goes a long way just in sort of not escalating the anxiety when something like that happens. Thank you for developing those relationships and maintaining them.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel, I'm further on FIRE. I think we're good. We can move on to building, please, Deputy CIO.
So the building starts on page, my eyes are, 88. As noted in the past, all costs for the building department are covered by the building revenues with any surplus or deficit taken from the building reserves. So the net budget in the reserve is a decrease of $285,000. And there's a change, which is a change of 68% or an increase of 115,000. So this department is not funded by the tax levy at all. In 2026, it's forecasted that there will be the deficit of 285,000 from the building reserve to cover operational costs. Council approved in recommendation in 2021 that there should be 2X operating costs in reserves. As part of the capital program, staff have built into the budget internal financing from the building reserve to cover the costs of two public work large pieces of machinery for the township's fleet replacement, which is $1.4 million. This plan is to help spread the costs of the machinery over three years. As a result, interest revenue will be paid to the building department from the tax base. If this method is approved by council, it's expected that the building department will realize about $20,000 in interest income, which the rate will be calculated each month based on the bank interest rates, which are currently at 2.89%. With the plan to have the building reserve replenished in 2028 for this loan. If this plan is approved, the projected ending balance of the building reserve for 2026 is $1.18 million, which is 1.22X operating costs. Other noteworthy adjustments, our building revenue is forecasted to be lower in 2025 by about 100,000, which aligns with our, the results that we're seeing today with lower building revenues. The remuneration budget does have an increase of $49,000, as we talked about earlier in the remuneration section of the budget. Although included in this total is the allocation of split time of building inspectors with the STR program back into the building department. So it added about $3,000 on this adjustment. And then lastly, the digital septic scanning program contract with Tatham Engineering continues into 2026. However, the budget has been decreased by $7,000. As it's anticipated, it will be completed in 2026. And I'll just pause it there.
Counsel, any questions on this one? I think I'm okay. Seeing none, I guess we can move on to bylaw.
Bylaw starts on page 92. And the bylaw's net budget is $551,000, which is an increase of 17% or $82,000 over 2025. As noted earlier in the remuneration section, all of those adjustments account for most of the increase in this department, which is a $67,000 increase. And again, as stated earlier, it's, part of it is a realignment of bylaw staff time on short-term rental activities, which has been added back to bylaw and reduced in the, in the SDR department by approximately $13,000. And this includes the elimination, or sorry, we're not in this STR section. This is still the bylaw section. So other noteworthy adjustments, increasing the cost for after-hour services due to a reduction in the service provider. And alternatives are very limited. The township was able to quickly procure another provider, but the cost has increased about $7,000 annually. The service received since moving to the new provider has been much better than, than we've experienced in the past. The 2026 pay parking revenues and other bylaw generated revenues from fines, parking permits, non-resident parking permits are all at the same 2025 level, except for the parking at Concession 5 West, which is a $5,000 reduction from 2025, as the project will not be ready to be implemented by the summer of 2026 from the bylaws standpoint. Bylaw 65, the vehicle was transferred into bylaw from the short-term rental department for 2026. However, there is a chargeback for vehicle use activities to this short-term rental department, which has been earmarked, which will result in about a $400 revenue. Line item for bylaw.
Okay, yeah, I think we have a few questions on this one. Start with Counselor Locat.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Do we know why that program will not be ready by this summer?
Deputy, or Madam Clerk?
I think the part of it is a future report coming to council about the end of concession 5 West in the beach access, which will be in cooperation with the bylaw department. So once we establish what's going to occur at that location, and the bylaw was waiting to piggyback on that with the implementation, that Public Works is, has a report that's coming to council.
Okay, could we not expedite?
There is a report coming to council on December 10th meeting. And then you can, it'll be up to council to decide what direction to take, which will then enable bylaw to then set some direction for how they want to do with the pay parking.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counsel? Good. Yeah, I'm going to jump into this. I will be talking a little bit more tomorrow probably about, or I'm going to bring up about revenue strategies. But I see bylaws being an opportunity for, obviously, we're looking at cost containment mostly here, but revenue generation. And I see a couple of areas. And we, these are things that we, I'm not getting into what I'm going to talk about tomorrow, but what we've talked about before. The first one is, is the AMPs, the Automatic, Counselor Locat, what does it stand for again? Automatic?
Administrative Monetary Penalty System.
Penalty system. And the amount of time that we spend and money every Thursday in Arilia dealing with all these charges and receiving fines, and the fine revenue in no way, and no disrespect to any of our staff, begins to even cover, because those fines are at the discretion of the justices of peace or the judge presiding at that time, but tend to be fairly small. And, and it's a frustrating thing. And I see the AMPs program as being not just for short-term rentals, but the opportunity for FIRE fines, all the littering, whatever council wants to decide. You name it, we can, we can look at that. So I'd like to have a discussion maybe tomorrow about, and I know it's not something that Deputy CIO, we can get numbers for right away, but I'd like to remind people this budget's not formally passed until April of 2026, so we have time to, to look at opportunities. That's one area I'll look at. The other one for me is, you mentioned about short-term rentals and the reduction of people that are there. I know our short-term rental numbers in terms of licenses has gone down, has not met our expectations of original 300, which is, which is fine. But I am really concerned because I hear from a lot of people where short-term rentals continue to operate without a license. And I'll be advocating tomorrow, and I think that we should be very leery of taking people off of short-term rental enforcement. And I'd like to see a renewed focus on compliance with short-term rentals. There's no reason why people should be in our community able to continue their business unscathed and not having to, to follow not just the fine itself, or the licensing fee, but the safety and the security that goes with that in our community. And I think we need a renewed push. And I know, Madam Clerk, I'm throwing all on you right now, but, but again, going back to my initial comment in terms of revenue generation, and how do we, you know, create, frankly, provide services to our, to our residents at the least possible cost. And I'm a firm believer in pay-for-use, and this is something that I think would fall into that. But we'll have further discussion on that. And I'd be, I'd be looking at, why are we getting rid of short-term rental people? And if they actually are going away, or they're just being reallocated and we can move them back. Counselor Locat, I'll leave that to you.
Yeah, and, and, and thank you, your worship. The beauty of the AMPs program is that you can increase the fines for repeat offenders, which is something that isn't necessarily done by the courts. So that's, you know, that would be a benefit to, to the residents of Tiny, that the same people causing the same problems are dealt with more harshly.
Recidivism is an issue, for sure. Any other comments on bylaw, please? Counselor Locat, or sorry, Counselor Brunel, please.
Thank you. Through you, Chair, just want to know, when did the new provider start for the answering service?
Thank you for that question. I believe it was April, but I can get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you. No, that was, I wasn't quite sure if it was this recent or April. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Good. Okay. Deputy CIO, please.
Okay, the next budget is STR, Short-Term Rental Accommodation. And the budget starts on page 96. And the net reserve is showing a deficit change of 23,000, which is, oh, sorry, deficit budget of 23,000 funded by the reserve, a change of 151% decrease or $68,000 decrease in the budget. So the Short-Term Rental Accommodation Licensing Program is set up to be a net zero, and all of the program costs are to be covered by the licensing fees, so that there is no impact to the tax rate. In 2025, realizing that license revenues were coming in even lower than anticipated during 2025 budget planning, staff made more adjustments to ensure the program remains cost neutral for 2026. It's important to note that although not shown in the budget, the program is expected to realize fine revenues issued since 2024 and court-awarded legal costs, which are anticipated to cover the deficit in future years. If there is a deficit in 2026 as predicted, the interest costs associated with the township coffers covering the deficit will be added to the costs of the program and the revenue paid back to the township coffers. The rate will be calculated each month based on bank interest rates, which are currently 2.89%. So adjustments that have been made to this budget to achieve cost neutral as much as possible are as follows. So revenues for 2026 have been decreased to reflect conservative number of licenses to be issued, which is 150, in line with the 2025 actuals that we're seeing, which decreases the license revenue by 87,500 for a total estimate of 262,500 for 2026. Recently, council has approved a license fee increase of $2,000 for new applications or renewed licenses that have expired. At the time this budget was created and before the report was sent to council, it was assumed that the license fee, application fee received would be 1750. However, if the fee revenue comes in higher than our expenses, the surplus will be directed to the STR reserve. Increased fine revenues are expected in 2025, with more fine revenues expected in years to come, as mentioned earlier. At this time, we have put an earmark of $10,000 in fine revenues. After the adjustments in remuneration that were noted in the remuneration section, positions were, to positions, approximately $65,000 net reduction in the STR remuneration budget has been made. And the, and the reasons are, we realign positions to be in line with the lower license estimates, reallocating a portion of the remuneration back to the fire department, the building department, and the bylaw department, which reduced the budget by 27,000. And we've also eliminated three part-time bylaw officers directly allocated to the program. This reduction saves that apartment $38,000. Further, other adjustments are a reduction in estimated bank service charges of 6,300, the removal of a $10,000 transfer to the township's operating reserve, but in its place is a line item to transfer directly to and from the S T R reserve for the anticipated deficit in operations of 23,000, as discussed earlier. And then the vehicle bylaw that was transferred and noted earlier into bylaw from the S T R department and a chargeback setup has also reduced this budget. And that's it.
Counsel, any questions, comments? I think I've already spoken to mine so much, but... No? Okay. Good. Thank you, Deputy C A O. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Animals?
Yep, animal control on page 99. And this is just based on bylaw 23061. The net budget is 57,000, or an increase of 6%, or $3,000. And the total budget reflects the fees of animal control vendor contract, which will be renewed in early 2026, and we are estimating a small increase of about 5% for this budget.
Comments on Counselor Holker?
That's okay, your worship. I'll get into the numbers regarding animal control at our next council meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I thought that Randy's contract was two years, isn't it?
No, it's renewed in 2026.
Okay. Okay, fair enough. Time goes fast. Okay, we'll move on to property standards and fence viewers.
Yep. Page 101 is the property standards and fence viewers, and this budget is maintained at relatively the same level. There's a $2,000 budget, and actually, sorry, there's no change from 2025. It is a $2,000 budget.
And no activity in 2025, perhaps we will in 2026. No? Moving on to Public Works Administration.
Okay. So this budget starts on page 103. And the net budget for Public Works Administration is $705,000. The change in the budget book is, it says 14%, it's actually 12%. And it says 87,000, and it's actually 76, so that's just a correction there. But the remuneration judgments plus the reallocation of labor from, to students from the roads department account for the majority of this increase in the budget, which is 76,000. There are some other minor adjustments made to line items, but they're all under $5,000. And lastly, the Dynamic Shore Project, Dynamic Shoreline Project will be completed in 2025 and is not needed for 2026. 11,000 of the 2025 budget has been reallocated to planning's 2025 actuals to support the shoreline management, OP, and zoning bylaw project to cover the shortfall that we're seeing in 2025. Other than that, there's no budget for it in 2026.
Comments, questions, counsel?
We think you guys want a clarification, the Dynamic Shoreline Project, is that the, can someone explain to me what that project was?
Director Leach?
Certainly, that's the project we began about three years ago in Public Works, and we just recently put the bylaw in, the interim control bylaw a couple of years ago, and now we're just going through the process of waiting for the dates for all that to get rectified. But the funds that were previously done were for consulting work, and now that the upfront consulting work has been completed through Public Works, planning is carrying the ball moving forward, and Mary Ann and I work together on all dynamic beach items. Thank you.
I just thought that was perhaps the delineation, but that's continuing, right? The delineation initiative?
Demarcation? Yep. Okay. Great. Any comments? Thank you. Good there.
And if I can just address counsel's question from earlier, just regarding the vendor that we undertook to address the after-hours, that did start in April.
Okay. Thank you. On to roads.
Okay. So the roads budget starts on page 106, and the net budget is 3.47 million. It's actually a decrease of 1% or $20,000. Some major adjustments in the 2026 budget include an increased allocation to capital reserves, which should say $15,000 is the increase for a total reserve allocation of 50, and that's just pending proceeds of disposition. So that's one of the capital reserve transfers that are talked about that remains in operations. It's really dependent on the revenues that we're seeing. Remuneration adjustments include an increase of 29,000 for all of the remuneration adjustments we noted earlier. There has been some reallocations of labor time, so there's 39,000 has been moved to the parks department, and 34,000 has been moved to Public Works Administration. So after redistribution to activities in the roads and council budgets, so all of the activities that follow in the roads budget, there is a decrease in remuneration in the unallocated remuneration. You'll see a nine-and-a-half thousand dollar variance, but that's just because we've reallocated throughout the budget. It's not a real true decrease, it's just going to different activities, and it's the unallocated overhead. Roads complex repairs, complex repairs and maintenance budget is reflective on ongoing maintenance and repairs, and it's been increased by 10,000. In this budget, there's evidence you'll see of the insurance cost reduction due to us joining the Simcoe County Pool, which is a $27,000 reduction. There's several decreases in contracted services and material budgets in several of the activities. So continuation of AZE training, but less training is required as compared to 2025, so there's been a reduction of 17,500. Brushing and tree trimming is a reduction of 30,000, signs and guide rails, a reduction of 5,000, and noxious weed spraying on the rail trail is a reduction of 10,000. As we talked about in 2025, we smoothed out the cost of OSIM reporting that's required every two years to, to smooth that out over two years, the cost, so that there is no impact this year to the, to the budget for this project. Increases for contracted services and materials have been made as follows. Sweeping has been increased to 12, has been increased by 12,500, reflective of a multi-year contract. Dust layer has been increased 5,000, as some, some roads require more dust than once per year. Gravel resurfacing, reflective of the continuation of improvement to gravel roads, is an increase of 12,000. Snow plowing and removal has increased 10,000, which was maintained in 2025 at 2024 levels, and line painting in several areas and parking areas has an increase of $15,000.
Thank you, Deputy C A O. Counselor Holker?
Yes, thank you, your worship. On page 106, just short of being halfway down, D Z medical license from $120 to 1,000?
Yeah, the D Z, they're required to do medicals now, and it's just when those timed out for all of our operators. So some years it's gonna be higher, some years it's gonna be lower.
Thank you.
Okay.
And just to clarify, if I may, that the 120 is an actual cost, that's 2025's actual, the budget is 1,000, it's the same as 2025.
Thank you.
Counselor Bernal, please.
Great, thank you to you, Chair, to Director Leach. The line painting, is it more line painting than usual, or just an increase in cost in line painting?
Again, very similar to the previous one. There's certain parking areas that will have increases that we don't do every single year, and it helps out with the, and also on our roads. We are trying to do a little bit more every year.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Director Leach, put you on the spot. How many kilometers we're gonna pave in 2026?
A little over 14.
Thank you. Everybody likes to hear that one. I want to ask you how many bridges and culverts, okay? I'll get, I'll take it easy on you. Counsel, anything more to do with roads? Painting, crosswalks? Counselor Bernal?
Through you, Chair, to Director Leach, again, is sweeping the same thing, where we have an increase of $9,000 from 36,000 to 45,000, and then 47,500 in 2027? So is it just more sweeping, or just an increase in cost?
Yes, this will be more subcontracted sweeping versus our sweeping. Our sweeping just basically pushes the sand off the road, where the contracted sweeping picks it up, and then we move it away from those actual locations. So we'll be increasing that contract, and plus it just goes up in cost year over year for that activity.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Holker?
Yeah, Director Leach, through you, your worship. Every year, there's a tremendous amount of sand that ends up on the road between our stores down at Palm Beach and the water. Is that sand rebrought back to the beach, or is it removed?
It depends on a lot of factors, but if it's just blow sand off the beach, we can push it back. But if there's any contents in there that we're not sure of, then we'll just sweep it up, pick it up, and dispose of the, of the sand.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Great, okay, I think we're good.
The next budget is the fleet maintenance budget, which starts on page 113. And the net budget is $895,000, which is an increase of only 1% or $10,000. And just to reminder, this budget contains the cost of the township's major fleet, and estimates are provided by the P W director, the P W superintendent, the fleet supervisor, and the township's mechanics. All the vehicles of the township are included in fleet except for fire, bylaw, building, and water vehicles, which are tracked in their respective operating budgets. Public Works performs the maintenance on these vehicles, but they're not captured under this particular budget. Remuneration adjustments, as noted earlier, account for $35,000 increase, reflecting an overall decrease in all the other expenditures in the budget. Fuel costs have been decreased by about $14,000 overall. Repairs and maintenance have decreased overall by 26,400, reflective of the township investing in newer fleet and disposing of older fleet consistently. GPS monitoring costs in 2026 have been added for a total of $14,400.
Okay, any comments on fleet? Counselor Bernal, please.
Thank you through you, Chair, to Director Leach. The GPS monitoring costs is, has been added, so there weren't any before, and this is actually a new, or there were some before, and then this, again, additional, and if the additional is increase in cost, are we doing more of it?
Yep, thank you through the chair. This is a new package that we've just taken on last year, and it's, the previous package, it was very basic. It did not provide us a lot of intelligence and a lot of tracking, and the service was actually substandard, where we couldn't rely on the data we were getting. This new software with the GPS that we have, it monitors everything, speed, locations, if you're wearing your seatbelt, everything, you're backing up going forward, so it's, it's a far more accurate system. And it provides us for validating things like our plow routes and those types of items, but also when it comes to legal, legal cases, that it shows where our vehicles were and what we're doing. As we get our new plows in, we're now integrating the controls of the plows, so that we know when the sanders on and off, plow up, plow down. Some of the older plows aren't capable of that, but the new plows are, so we're gonna be, that'll even provide us more from a liability standpoint protection, and also ensuring that we know where our staff is at any given time.
Counselor Bernal, follow up?
Great, no, thank you. Second question, one more question. This, I think we'll have a little fun on this one. I noticed that most vehicles will just use one fuel type, but the, on page 114, actually it's on 115, but it starts on 114, the R114-2018 Chevrolet Silverado has two lines, one for fuel for diesel and one for fuel for gasoline, so is it safe to say that they, that this vehicle uses both fuels?
That would be one of our fuel trucks, so it does a fuel, a separate fuel tank on it for carrying, for loading up out in the field for loaders and graders and those types of things.
So it's, so it's powered by two different fuels?
No, one, one type of fuel, but it's carrying a zip tank for spare fuel for other uses out in the field.
Great, thank you.
Good. Further questions on roads? I was just looking through, I know in the, in the past years, you've given us, I know, I'm looking through the asset management section, I didn't find it, but Deputy C A O, there was a chart that we had that, I know a couple of years ago, we were looking at a pretty big, we had three trucks that were gonna be, needed to be replaced in...
Three plows.
You know, three plows, was it? Counselor Holker? Yeah, anyway, a lot of money, and I know that with asset management, we're gonna try and minimize that and flatline that, those spikes. So I'm just curious where we are on that chart that I'm referring to. I can't find it, but are we, is there any need for, for, I guess the other thing too is, how long is it taking to get a truck? If, even if we order it, how long does it take internally? Is it still a year or two before we get them? And should we be looking at any additional accruals for, if we have, say, four coming next year in 2027?
So I can speak to the asset management piece, which we will be speaking to later in the budget. We can certainly go back and find that chart, and if it isn't included, I'll just get some clarification with you, because we do have a comparison of what our asset management is to each and every capital purchase that's being proposed. And then the other piece is that we have projected out some borrowing internally, I talked about it earlier, to purchase these plow trucks and other vehicles in order to improve our fleet, so that we, we are not constantly using the older fleet and we're getting rid of them. But as far as delivery timing and things like that, Director Leach would be better at answering that.
Thanks, Deputy C A O. Director Leach?
Yeah, currently, we are assessing our fleet on an ongoing basis for, especially in the area of plows. We did put an advanced order in for two or three plows. One, we are expecting early in 2026, and the other two, we're hoping by the end of 2026. Right now, our plow lead times anywhere from a year and a half to two and a half years when we place the order. So we will be assessing through this year what our plow ordering is going to be moving forward. These are critical pieces of equipment for our operations, and we got to make sure that we keep them, these, these delays, and you'll notice in the maintenance of it, we're actually, because of these delays, we're actually keeping a couple extra plows a little longer, and so their maintenance costs will go up in 2026 versus what they historically be, because of the long lead times, and we're trying to get ahead of that curve.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Just to curious aside, I know with the snow we had the last couple of days, I was online, and I looked at Berry's, City of Berry's website, and they have a site that shows where their plows were. And I'm not a big believer in where the plows are, but you know, you already take care of that, but they had 14 plows. Director Leach, how many plows do we have?
We have our 11 plows that are operating, a couple of loaders, and a couple of graders.
So goes to show how important this is in a city of 167,000 people, it's the same number of plows roughly as we do. So, it's incredible.
We tend, have a tendency with this type of, the winds and stuff like that, really get our concession roads, and we're drifting is a big issue for this township.
Counselor Holker?
Not to mention their tax rate versus ours.
You're learning. Good. Okay, any other comments on fleet maintenance? Good. Deputy C A O? I think we're good.
Okay, the next budget is the Huronia Airport, which starts on page, or is on page 129. The Huronia Airport operating cost has a modest increase of $1,000 over 2025's budget for a total of 42.5,000, and that includes the insurance costs the township secures for its portion of the ownership of the airport. The Huronia Airport operating costs have been reduced slightly. mainly from the reduction of the runway maintenance costs. And a small increase to their capital project has a budget increase of two point four, or two thousand four hundred dollars for total capital request of seven thousand three hundred dollars.
Any comments on this one? Deputy Mayor, please.
Thanks for you, your worship. What a big change from three years ago on the asks and stuff. So it just goes to show what the new board has done. They made some significant changes at the airport and the investment that's gone in from the pilots and the hangars and the rental fees and the gas fees and everything else. It's nice to, it's really refreshing to see that it seems to be all in order now, so.
I will pass Deputy Mayor, certainly I will pass that along as our representative on that board. It is a, yeah, it's nice to see there's been some, it's a very engaged committee and a lot of people that really care about the airport. I will say that there have been some positive financial developments. We are actually have two, we're going to be leasing out land. We lease land, we don't own land. And just to reiterate, it's a shared ownership between Middleland, Penetang, and Tiny. Fifty percent to Middleland, twenty-eight percent to Penetang, and twenty-two percent to Tiny. But we will be leasing land to our first non-aviation customers in the next few months. We've had significant development, permanent development already with an organization that you may know. Company is called Juno, that's working on the Ring of Fire. And last week, there was a significant announcement from the provincial government in terms of putting the road from Highway seventeen up to Martin River. And this company is building here in Huronia Airport to supply that project. So we anticipate further development. We've done a, sold the snowplow, the infamous snowplow is gone. That didn't fit in the building. We replaced it with a leased, brand-new snow removal front-end loader. Replaced the roof. And what I'm most proud of is we have a development reserve for the first time ever. So it's, I won't say how much right now, but it's growing. So we're planning for the future and making infrastructure investments. And it's going well. So thank you, and I will pass along the good wishes. Your comments on the airport? Okay, moving on.
Hey, the next.
Environmental stewardship.
Budget's on page one thirty-one, environmental stewardship. So the budget for twenty-twenty-five, or twenty-twenty-six has been maintained for environmental stewardship at similar levels. The Septic Reinspection Program is estimated to review fifteen hundred properties at a total cost of a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars based on the contract that we have with them. This is an additional four thousand dollars over twenty-twenty-five. And the Septic Reinspection Additional Work Line item has been adjusted to reflect max billing per their contract that we have with Tatham, which is actually a reduction in the budget of four thousand dollars, which was overbudgeted in twenty-twenty-five.
Comments on this one, gentlemen? No, I think I'm quite happy with that. And Tatham, just those of you who know, they're obviously owned by another company. But work within this building and the line between the two is non-existent. And great working relationship and function very well in here. And for the township, of course. So seeing that we have no sewage systems speak of in terms of the operations, integral part of making sure that our environment is protected. Okay, we'll move on to water, another important area.
Water is on page one thirty-three, it starts on one thirty-three. And the water operations are funded on a cost recovery model, which means that all expenses are covered by user fees and any surplus or deficit is transferred to the water reserve. So there is a net reserve change of eight hundred and six thousand dollars to the good, which is a change of one percent or an increase of eight point seven thousand dollars. So overall, water revenues are forecasted an increase, again, of a hundred and eight thousand dollars over twenty-twenty-five. And the fourth quarter water meter bills, just if you're looking at the actuals, are still to be issued for twenty-twenty-five. Major adjustments include remuneration, as noted before, our ninety thousand dollar increase. However, sixty-two thousand has been redistributed to activities under the water budget, leaving an increase of twenty-eight thousand in undistributed overhead. Consulting fees have been reduced by five thousand. Insurance savings expected to be realized by joining the pool has decreased the water budget by sixteen thousand. Cell phone and telephone costs were underbudgeted in twenty-twenty-five. So twenty-twenty-six has been adjusted and increased by twelve thousand dollars, which also includes two new cell phones, which are required. The hydro budget adjustment in line with actuals results in a decrease of fifteen thousand dollars. Water treatment chemicals have been reduced by four. Well maintenance and rehabilitation is up by about five thousand. Generator maintenance has increased due to its age, a six thousand dollar increase. And regular reservoir maintenance costs are also up ten thousand dollars. And lastly, as directed by council in previous years, source water protection efforts by the Severn Sound and Veterinary Association have been captured in the water department and they are maintained at the same level as twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you Deputy Cao. Comments, questions, gentlemen? So I have a couple, first of all. I have been, I know I got an early answer, but I've been getting a lot of comments about the water filling station in Perkinsville. So do we have something in our funding gap list on this? I'm sorry, I can't find it. Okay, well, we can deal with that when we get there, okay. The other item I had, and maybe this is something that Rebecca can help us with later, is I know the township, the County of Simcoe has instituted and approved a PFAS, polyfluoroalkyl, I forgot the S, forever chemicals and testing for forever chemicals. And I was wondering if we could check on that. That's not a budget item per se, I don't think, but if there was any implications to including that as part of our testing procedure to make sure that that initiative with the County of Simcoe is included moving forward. Director Leach, if you know more, that'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, of course. No, we have had discussions about PFAS within the water group. No firm plans as far as our testing at this point, but I'll make sure that the county's starting to look at that, that we'll see if we can marry up with them. To keep an eye on the PFAS, it's obviously a major topic. And we are aware of it in the department and we'll see what the county's doing and report back.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Counselor, please.
Yes, through you, your worship. As a member of the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence River Basin Cities Initiative, they also are extremely, I should say, getting very, very active in this, in this project. Just for everybody's knowledge, thank you.
Okay, any comments, questions? Counselor, on water? Seeing none this time, goes to get in, Park Maintenance, please.
Okay, that starts on page one forty. And the net budget for Parks Maintenance is one point four seven million, which is an increase of five percent or sixty-nine thousand dollars. The Parks Department's remuneration budget, as discussed earlier, the changes amount to a hundred and four thousand dollars in increase, including thirty-nine thousand that was reallocated from the Roads Department to this budget. After redistribution of labor to activities, twenty-seven thousand dollars represents an increase in undistributed overhead. The gain-loss item is eliminated in this budget. And in its place is the proceeds of disposition, which are planned to realize about fifteen thousand dollars in revenue, which will be directed to the Parks Capital Reserve. Included is a transfer to Parkland Reserves for ten thousand dollars, which is dependent on the level of Parkland Trust receipts that this department receives. To track and understand costs related to each community centers, budgets were created in twenty-twenty-five, or sorry, in twenty-twenty-four. Since then, direct costs were properly coded to these cost centers in twenty-twenty-five and staff have used these amounts as the basis for estimating the twenty-twenty-six budget figures as follows. The TTCC, it's maintained at the same twenty-twenty-five budget. The WCC, the net increase is four thousand six hundred dollars, mainly from hydro redistribution, as mentioned earlier. And LACC, the net increase is eight thousand two hundred, mainly from hydro redistribution, as mentioned above. Note, hydro costs have been redistributed within Parks budget according to the actuals as well. So if you're looking at the actuals, you see that they've also been redistributed accordingly. Activities within this budget that are greater than five thousand dollars or less than five thousand dollars over twenty-twenty-five include inter-departmental support. So it's a reduction of eleven thousand dollars, which is now being captured directly in those departments where the work is being carried out, for example, in the council's budget. Recycling bins and picnic tables has an increase of eight thousand in materials, which was part of the twenty-twenty-five capital budget and it's now in the operating budget. Garbage charges has an increase of ten thousand eight hundred, of which it's anticipated that six thousand five hundred is related to the provincial-led recycling changes. Walkway maintenance has seen an increase of twenty-nine thousand dollars over twenty-twenty-five, mainly in labor, thirteen thousand dollars, and materials, sixteen. Parks facility maintenance is a reduction of eight thousand in contracted services and materials combined. And washroom maintenance, nine thousand six hundred is due to labor and a modest porta potty rental increase of four thousand. And in this department, there's also a significant reduction in insurance because of the savings by nine thousand dollars.
Deputy Cao, thank you. Deputy Mayor, please.
Thanks through you, Chair. Just a question regarding the picnic tables. Are these new ones that are now, if we're realizing that it's operational as part of a Parks thing, is that why it's been moved from capital to operational? That's part A, part B would be, and are these new ones accessible?
It's, we do a combination, they won't all be accessible. Some are, some of these are repairs and some of them are new. Typically, what we do at the end of the winter season is when we repair all our picnic tables and benches and either painting, repairing boards, or replacing the whole assembly. Typically, we can, we do buy the steel ones, so typically, we just replace the lumber on most of them when they wear out.
That's great, thanks. Supplemental, if I may, Chair?
Of course, please.
Thank you. And just in regards to the garbage charges, the anticipated six and a half thousand related to the provincial-led recycling changes, is this due to ICNI not being part of the new program?
That's correct. The, they will not be picking up at this building, our fire halls up at the complex. So what we've developed is, we're working with one of our waste managers to have pickups at these locations. So we'll be providing that, we're just working with the fire department on frequency for all the buildings. So we'll be taking that task on ourselves.
That's great. Follow up to that, please? Thank you. Just as a follow-up, is that, within that six and a half, are we also factoring the, factoring in the possibility of, because of these changes, we may see more litter on the roads as a result?
That would be, that would be under our garbage budget, that's for sure. We're hoping not, because basically, your household should not change. So the household will not see the difference with this new change, other than two trucks coming by the house instead of one. And with our commercial being such small in the township, we're hoping that they'll follow the rules and not throw it out in the curbside.
Great, thank you.
I can jump in here just to continue on with that one. I know we're only, you know, ninety-three percent residential, but I, again, I'm on revenue generation here. Director Leach, if we were to, I'm just throwing this out here. Like if we had a bulk waste program, it could be residential, it could be ICI, would we be able, and we structured it as a polluter pays model? So if you buy a tag, you give us a call and we pick it up. Would that be something even conceptually, that just when you're at high level, that we could? So then, you know, if somebody, for instance, if one of the local stores can't get rid of their garbage or they need something, and rather than us, you know, having to deal with, because we talk about this at county all the time. But it's true that people are going to find a way to find dump toilets or, you know, stuff like that. And then in our process so far is to put a yellow tag on it, which, you know, of course, by law, that's what they do and you're going to get fined if you don't do it. But is there a way, or we would even have the possibility, be able to set up a tiny, unique program where we would pay for that pickup on demand, but for a charge and that we would get rid of it?
That was part of, a little bit of our thought process about the recycling pickup. As far as the bulk pickup, I believe the county still has a program on that where you can call ahead and they'll come and do a bulk pickup. The recycling changes, I don't think unfortunately, won't stop the behavior of some people dumping things like toilets and stuff like that. We do have a cost recovery, if we have to pick it up in front of the house, that we will charge people back for those costs. And we've done that before too. So if there's a bunch of stuff that's outside, on somebody puts curbside, we let them know to pick it up, they don't, and we end up having to clean it up, then we will charge them back.
Okay, so that's revenue generation. In direct way, so we would, we would find them and we would also charge them to take away whatever they had in terms of a bulk. Yeah, I was thinking more about the ICI component of it. And, you know, like say we've got four businesses in Palm Beach and then every Monday afternoon, there'd be a bunch of boxes laying around and who's going to actually get rid of them and take them away? That's my concern.
And this was just an internal discussion within our public works about thinking about that type of, of a service for those through the, what we're going to be doing with our contractor. We can look into that further to see if there's some sort of feasibility and what the impact might be. At the end of the day, they would still have to pay because it wouldn't be, really shouldn't be borne by the taxpayer. But it's, at the end of the day, we could investigate if that's something that we can do. It wouldn't be by our staff, it'd be all a hundred percent subcontracted.
Okay, no, yeah, just to provide, you know, the essence of carrot versus a hammer sort of thing and see if we could do something on that.
And I think the SSEA did a good study on our waste. And when you get into offices and places like this, our diversion rate is very good. As soon as you start picking up other people's diversions, you just maybe don't know exactly what may be in there and the content. It's kind of what we struggle in our public waste management system, but something we can look at and.
Thank you. Devol, my second topic, and it falls under Director Palas's group. And this were recreation and the day camp program. And I want to make the public aware that Director Palas, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think your budget on some of the, almost two point four million dollars. And there's a lot of programs in here, so I'd like to give you the opportunity just to give us an update if there's any program changes, anything moving forward. We put an off, and we're very, very proud of our programs, and I'm not saying that we're not and moving forward. But I always want to make the public aware about how much, how much effort and time and how great these programs are. They're not satisfying just tiny. There are a lot of the participation is coming from other municipalities in North Simcoe and from the city. I know a lot of people bringing their grandkids up and put them in the program, which is great. But it is a sizable cost. And this is the time of year that we have to look and at some point too, justify some of these programs. And your plans for us moving forward with them? If you could, just, yeah, just looking through all the different programs and any changes on a high level that we'll be contemplating and any costs on that.
I think we should, we should go through the summary first before we get into that because that was, the other was, was Tim's portion versus our.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were already in the same room.
Not quite there.
Okay, we'll save that one, put that on hold, we'll give you time to think on that one. Counselor Burnow.
Great, thank you, a couple of questions through you, Chair, to Director LeBlanc. For rentals, portable washrooms on page one forty-five, looks like we haven't received a bill for twenty-twenty-five yet. Are we going to be, is the bill anticipated to be sixty-three five that was budgeted? Or can you comment on that, please?
I can comment on that. The vendor for the porta potties and stuff like that there, they got a new financial system and they're just trying to figure out the invoicing. So you're going to see a flood of this coming through very shortly. And it's, it'll all fall within the tendered budget. And we're looking at multi-year contracts with this company. They actually give us a very good deal and excellent service. So it's just, they had some changes in their financial software, so that created a bit of an issue this year for billing.
Great, thank you. And follow up on that, is the multi-year contract for another two years, I see? two years. I see a 6% increase for 2025 and an approximate 4% increase in 2027. So is that part of the contract?
That's correct.
Thank you. Second thing, last thing is the walkway maintenance. I see the budget of 2025, 25,000. We actually, the actuals up to now is almost double. And then we go to 2026 budget. It looks like we're going to go to 55,000, which is more than double than what we had this year. But then we go to 2027 and goes back down to 31,000. So can, can you give me a little bit of an explanation on the walkway maintenance now and for the future?
Thank you. Yeah, this year, coming up, we've got a lot of our walkways that need to be opened up. And we got some operational maintenance on some of our previous boardwalk systems. You'll notice in the capital, we have one very large one for LA, but this is just for some small maintenance items to get them. And also some of our current trails, a lot of work needs to be done to provide better access and more open access, signage, delineation, those types of things.
So it looks like we're, if I may follow up, it looks like we're catching up a little bit, and then in 2027, we'll do a little bit less.
That's correct. That's a good way of putting it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Deputy Mayor?
Thanks through you, Chair. Under frag mighties weed control, are we applying for that new Ontario grant that just got announced, I think, a day or two ago, maybe Friday?
I have not seen that. I'll have to take a look at that, but I'm assuming the SSEA does a lot of our invasive species management, so we'll follow up through that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Anything further? Okay, on park maintenance, perfect. Okay, moving on, now to recreation. Deputy CAO?
Okay. The recreation budget starts on page 148. And, sorry, give me one second. And the net budget for recreation is 555,000. It is a change, decrease of 25% or 183,000. But this is because to reflect the costs associated with both recreation and special events, a new budget has been created for special events and been carved out of recreation. So several costs and revenues have been updated in recreation. And as a result, the recreation budget is, is $183,000 lower. The true impact, though, if you're looking at the combined recreation and the new special events budget, is a total net increase of 91,000, which most of it has to do with all of the remuneration adjustments, as noted earlier in the budget. The remuneration adjustments account for $108,000 increase of the net 91,000, which means that the remaining combined budgets are a net decrease. As noted in council's budget, 58,000 of the remuneration increase relates to reallocation from council's budget into recreations. The remaining 46,000 relates to items, as noted, like in, in-year council review, council-approved wage review and COLA. 75% of the cost of the proposed student labor positions, which are listed on the funding gap and the, the cases included in this document, relates to recreation, and 25% is allocated to the special events budget. Several line items throughout the budget have been consolidated out of various individual programs into categories by program type, which allow for easier tracking and transparency of costs. Items consolidated include registration fees, donations, and materials. For the recreation budget separately, adjustments worth noting are: registration has been consolidated again into adult children, summer day camps, 55-plus CIT, youth, art, and March break programs, and a reduction in total of 6,500 has been made in the 2026 budget. Tai Chi has also been consolidated with adult programs, and basketball programs has been consolidated with child recreation. Grants, other than the remaining carryover grant from the Nature's Connect Seniors Program, have been removed as these are not dependable. A reduction of $16,000 in revenue. Sponsorship revenue has been added at a $5,000 increase to the budget. Advertising expenses have increased by 4,500. However, advertising revenues, which were new in 2025, have been increased by $2,000 as a continued cost recovery measure associated with the Parks and Recreation Activity Guide. Material budget line items have been consolidated and reduced by 5,300 overall, but a general sundry account has been added for 10,000. Computer software previously approved by council has been increased accordingly at $7,000 increase over 2025. I'll just pause it there.
Great. Thank you very much. Comments, questions? Counselor Burnell, please.
Great. Thank you. I'd just like to get through you, Chair, a rundown or explanation about the proposed staff position for business case from Josh, from Director Palis, sorry.
Director Palis, please.
Yep, through you, Mayor Evans. So, working with the Director of Public Works and the CAO, some challenges were brought forward in the amount of labor that park staff are putting into setting up and taking down for recreation programs during the four summer months. So this has been proposed to council for their consideration, so that parks are able to focus more on those tasks at hand that might be priorities, and recreation takes responsibility for the setup and teardown of the recreation programs.
Counselor Burnell?
Great. Thank you.
Good. Okay. Sorry, I, my, my mistake. I, when I said 2.53 to you before, Director Palis, it's actually 554,000. So, yeah, I was off quite a bit. So, but I wonder if you could just give us, are we looking at the same complement of programs for 2026? Any changes you may have? And just give us a high-level overview?
Yes, absolutely. So we've, we've technically increased our program participation by about 500 people from 2025, or 2024 to 2025, which is a nice number when you look at percentage based on our population rate. So in one year, we have increased by about 500 people. Some of the changes that we're looking at making, not only internally to the staffing model, are going to allow us to pivot into drop-in programs and expand programming options into evenings and weekends because of bringing on some part-time staff. Additionally, if we gather some further support through the parks laborer position, this is also going to allow us to expand, because if we are unable to, if we are unable to receive those positions, those part-time staff will be generally used for some of that setup and takedown. So a lot of increases as far as evening and drop-in is what we're kind of looking at right now. We have increased significant programming in the 55-plus realm of program delivery. So we delivered a adventure-based recreation program for 55-plusers, which involve pole, pole walking, kayaking, canoeing, nature walking. We're looking at new walking groups to be established. But I think the, the restructure of this budget will allow us to pivot to community needs a little bit more in a creative way. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Director. CAO?
On top of all that the Director just outlined, he has been also implementing a multi-year phase-in as it relates to our, the fees that we charge for our programs, making sure that they, every year, we're closing the gap on how much revenue versus how much expense to deliver those programs, but also making sure that we still are staying in line, not just with our neighbors, but the other, the other parties that provide that type of programming for, especially for our summer day camps type of thing as well. Director Palis has been charged with finding other, new sources of revenue coming in. He is very active on writing, on the grant scene, and we're hoping that a couple of the grants that, that he has applied for, if we're successful, will provide us with additional revenue to be able to provide additional programming at reduced costs for the municipality and, and again, continue to shrink that, that gap.
Great. Thanks, CAO. Sounds great. Sounds good. Any other comments on recreation? Seeing none, we need a short break. Moved by Counselor Locas, second to Counselor Burnell at 3:25. While we make this five, six minutes, how about that? All those in favor? Thank you. Just in a brief recess. Thanks very much. Thank you. Just in a brief recess. Thanks very much.
Seconded.
There we go. Moved by deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Holoka, the meeting reconvene at 3:36 PM. All of them in favor? Perfect. Carried unanimously, four to zero. Okay, moving back to the budget, just to give everybody a heads up, our plan, our so plan as we are right now is that we'll finish up with the operations section here, Deputy CIO, if it's okay. And then I think we'll, councillor Walma is supposed to be here tomorrow, so maybe we'll start afresh with asset management tomorrow. But today, given that we, from the, from the width of the material, it doesn't look like we have, we should be able to get rid of, done with the ops budget. And then if we could pop over to, to take a cursory look at the ops portion of the funding gap list. Now that we've, we've gone over these items on the budget, maybe it might be good for us to tie those together with the actual funding requests. And we can discuss those and then finalize those tomorrow, if possible as well, so. So, good. So, well, computer's good. We'll pass it back to you and start with.
Okay, great. We're going to start on page 167 of the new special events budget.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm just having a computer issue. Okay. So, the special events budget, as discussed earlier, has been carved out of the recreation budget. The net budget for 2026 is $281,000. So, remuneration reallocated from the recreation budget is $236,000. And it includes all the adjustments, as noted earlier. As mentioned earlier, 25% of the proposed student labour positions that are on the funding gap have been moved into this department. Volunteer management, environmental initiatives, agritourism event/market, previously called the farm market, the farm crawl, winter carnival, movie night events, March break events, budgets have all been allocated to special events. In addition, a new event project has been added to allow for flexibility for establishing a new event not yet planned. This budget is expected to be cost neutral, with the registration fees covering anticipated expenses.
Councillor Holoka, kick us off.
I know with Director Paulus's previous experience, I know he's anxious to expand new events. Is, say we were to organise a big concert, is that what you mean when you expect the new event to be cost neutral?
Director Paulus?
Yep, through, through the mayor. I, I think with the allocated $8,000 that's in there, a big concert might be a little bit out of reach at this point. But that being said, things like the zoo to you that we did last year over March break, looking to expand onto that. The special events coordinator and I both really like the concept of the Small Halls Fest that Clearview hosts. I think something along those lines might be attainable to us. But that being said, with the realignment of the mayor's charity golf tournament, we will likely be bringing those event ideas through that tournament to, or through that committee to report to council if we are to implement. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, good.
Same ball?
Same ball. Yeah, we're good. Thank you. I think we've touched on a couple of things already. And no, we're all very pleased with the direction that your department's going, so. Great. Good. Deputy CIO? Heritage Advisory Committee?
Yep, Heritage Advisory Committee on page 170. So, generally, the 2026 budget is in line, except for a minor increase of $2,000 due to remuneration adjustments noted earlier. The net budget for Heritage Advisory Committee is $45,000, which is the change of 2,000 or 4%.
Comments, questions? Heritage Advisory person? He's good? Okay, moving on.
So, the next budget is the arenas budget. And actually, for this budget, we've moved it to capital, to show the reserve transfer to the arenas, in line with other transfers for capital. It just better reflects the investment that the township is making. So, this is actually no budget for 2026.
Comments, questions on this one? Okay, moving on then.
The next budget is the library reimbursement program. So, the library reimbursement program has a net budget of $183,000, which is a change of 12%, or a $20,000 increase. The library operating grant has been earmarked at the same amount of $38,000, the same for the past several years. Staff have increased the library membership reimbursement budget by $20,000 to reflect actuals, and to increase in, and to also increase it due to projected prices at some of the libraries for 2026. As noted in the past, any surplus or deficit will be offset with the library reserve fund. As of Q3 2025, the invoices received to date, so we've only received, not every single library has invoiced us up right up until Q3. So, still some costs coming in. But the library reimbursement program, I've shown how much we've received as of the date of Q3. So, $157,500 has been invoiced, which is reflective of 842 household memberships. I'll just pause it there.
Okay, any comments on the library? Libraries. Nice to see that Wasaga Beach has 33 new people from tiny. That's great. So... Councillor Holoka, please.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. So, we've basically fully recovered from the initial trauma of previous library issues. Is that correct?
Yes, I would say so.
Great. Thank you.
Any comments, questions? Councillor Brunel, please.
Yes, to follow up on what councillor Holoka just said, we do have representation on these boards at Midland, Springwater and Wasaga Beach, but that is directed from, our municipality decides who we send to these boards, but not Penetang. So, I don't know if it's fully recovered, but that's just the difference that we had from the beginning of our term to now. I don't know if we have one discussion with that. I probably not the time to discuss it now, but just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Well, I'll weigh in. I have two comments. First of all, I can't remember the amount that we spent when we started in our first year, but I can, let's guarantee, it was a lot more than $157,000, in terms of what we spent as a, of our planned expenditures we're supposed to be. I'm happy to see that, sorry, three comments. Happy to see that there's four participants now, I believe. From what I've talked to Mayor Rossin, and everything's fine with, with the Penetang machine library. They're actually upgrading it this year, as part of their budget. Deputy mayor was telling me they're renovating the basement, which is great. And the third thing is, is that if you've read the news lately, the township of Tey is, is going to be closing a couple of libraries. Sorry, four comments. So, the actual capital ownership of the libraries is, is under examination in a number of localities. I still believe that we should be looking at, in, in the future, a Libby-type, online-type program to augment this. I think there's a lot of people that are, are using, accessing libraries, a lot more people virtually than there are online. And the opportunities for virtual library membership in terms of music and learning and books is something that I'd like to be able to, in the future, be able to offer the, the community through either an existing program like Libby that's used in Toronto, or there, I know Barry has a program as well. I don't know the name of it offhand, but I think there are a lot of people and, and, you know, a combination effort where they could either pick up books here. But I think most people, especially the younger generation, not mine, are not going into a library so much. But they're certainly using the facilities online and, and looking to the future to provide that. But not in, not in 2026. So, my comments. Thank you. Good. Okay, I think we're good with libraries. Thank you. Deputy CIO?
Okay, the next budget is planning, and it starts on page 176. The planning's net budget is $370,000, which is, and this should also be changed to say a 1% increase or a $4,000 increase. The remuneration, as we've discussed before, it counts for a majority of the increase. Remuneration has been reallocated to various cost centres as planning staff allocate their time based on actuals. So, it's been reduced slightly with a $2,400 increase due to all of those adjustments. A notable adjustment is a reduction in the computer line software, computer software line of $29,300, which is the 2025 budget, which was for implementation of the cloud permit software. This amount has been reallocated to 2026 capital budget, and the surplus has been transferred as well accordingly. So, revenues have been adjusted as they were not, they are not predictable and reliable at this time. This includes a site plan control fee, the telecommunications tower requests, and lot deeming fees, which have been removed, resulting in an increase in the budget of $15,000. Update to the fees for planning applications are anticipated to be implemented in the first quarter of 2026. An increase in consulting and legal fees regarding the OLT appeals of the shoreline zoning bylaw has been added for a total of $45,000. In 2025, the prior year surplus was applied to the, to the amount of $10,000 for the Planning Act appeals budget, but that is not available in 2026, which results in a $10,000 increase to the 2026 line item. The budget that was added for Dynamic Beach Management Strategy bylaw development and related amendments to the official plan and zoning bylaw directed by council has been completed in 2025. And as I mentioned earlier in the budget, this 2025 amount has been transferred from PW for the in-year overage of $11,000. And the total budget has a decrease of $51,000.
Okay, thank you, Deputy CIO. And councillor, please.
Through you, Your Worship. I have two questions. My first one is for Director Hunt. The implementation of the cloud permit software, has that increased a client's ability to get a permit quicker?
Director Hunt?
Through the chair to councillor Holoka. It, it has for building permits. So, building department is fully on the software. And that's what we're looking to do, is include planning act applications. So, we find those efficiencies as well.
Councillor?
Okay, that's great. And I just want to highlight, legal and consulting fees regarding are very, I think, precious, shoreline zoning, or interim, or not interim, but our shoreline protection bylaw. Like, we've spent $45,000 of taxpayers' money to fight, to fight this. Is that correct?
Director Hunt?
Through the chair. So, that's what's anticipated to be required. So, we have not started the Ontario Land Tribunal process, but that is what we are anticipating will be required from a legal and expert witness perspective.
Okay, thank you very much. That's it for me.
So, we've, yeah, we've accrued $45,000 in anticipation of an appeal. Just an update, the county of Simcoe did approve official plan amendment number five, which was the Township of Teyne Dynamic Beach Management Strategy bylaw at our most recent meeting, where we ratified it last Tuesday, last Tuesday. So, so it's moving forward through the, the, on the, on our side. So, we'll, we'll, we'll yet to see, like, all these things. You never know till it, it starts. My question was to you, Director Hunt, was, we talked earlier about amps and some of the fine abilities. Is this something that could be utilized in your department? And if so, would it be, would it be a topic for revenue generation for 2026?
Certainly. So, through zoning bylaw, zoning infractions, I believe that that program can be utilized through that. So, we obviously work through the municipal law enforcement office to do that. So, but I believe that that can be used.
Okay, great. Good. Comments, questions, gentlemen? Planning? No? Okay. Councillor, sure.
Yeah, I understand that the county voted unanimously. Thank you.
Didn't even have to speak on that one. Believe it or not, I didn't say anything. Okay, moving on to Committee of Adjustment.
Okay. Sorry, that budget is on page 180. And the net budget is $70,000 for the Committee of Adjustment, which is a change of 85% or a $32,000 increase. And this is because, mainly because of reallocation of staff time to the Committee of Adjustment from planning. It counts for the entire budget increase, which is based on what we're seeing in 2025. Updates to the fees for the Committee of Adjustment applications are anticipated to be implemented in first quarter of 2026, and the remainder of the budget is status quo.
Deputy CIO, the new fees that are coming in place, are they going to cover the, the increase that we're seeing so far?
That's what the hope is, that we will try to get to a more neutral place.
I think sometimes the public doesn't understand how the Committee of Adjustment works, and that it is, albeit appointed by council, it's not controlled by council, and, which is fine. But, yeah, some of the decisions that go through do have implications on the taxpayers. And unlike other committees where we, we, we participate with, if we participate in this committee, we participate just like anybody, any other member of the public, in terms of the rulings or judgments. But unfortunately, they do have impacts, as we can see, $32,000 impact year over year. So. CIO Lam, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. So, we have been following the ever-changing provincial environment of which the planning works under. It's a new week, so I'm not sure which bill number is the latest one. But there is currently a comment period on some items, but then there's also been a comment periods, and the province at the same time has ratified some changes to, to the building more homes and all the different acts that are out there. Out of that comes some potential items that actually the director and I have been talking about that we may want to bring to council that currently are for what they call fully serviced settlement areas, meaning water and wastewater, but may also be something we may want to consider council looking at, even on our own with our, I, correct me, I believe it would take a zoning bylaw change to implement them, but may by council adopting some of the, the loosening restrictions that the province has put on, put in if we decide to follow that same route. May also eliminate a whole lot of applications from going to Committee of Adjustment, side yard setbacks, those type of things that there is now, under the provincial rules, a plus or a 10% variance, that if, if somebody is potentially within 10% of what the side, side yard setback could be, they wouldn't actually have to go through the Committee of Adjustment process, stuff like that. That, so, we're, we're looking at, at that. The director and I, like I said, we had a meeting on that last week. I said, we had a meeting on that last week, and it's one of the things we'll be looking at early next year to see whether there's some merit in bringing that type of change forward as we're doing some of our own zoning bylaw updates that will be initiated by staff coming forward next year.
Great, thanks CIO, perfect. Okay, anything else on Committee of Adjustment? Moving on to Economic Development.
Okay, the economic development budget's on page 182, and the economic development budget has just earmarked the same amount for 2026, which is $25,000, to the Economic Development Reserve. The reason why there's an increase over 2025 is because there's no prior surplus available, so it's all tax-funded.
Let's go up the trees.
Yeah. Thank you, your worship, through you. Yeah, I'm not in favor of this line whatsoever. I think until we get something concrete and decide to contribute, I think we should remove this line item. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor, comments? CIO Lam, please.
Thank you, so I will remind council, I'm not disagreeing with you councillor Holoka, I'm just reminding council that we did create this reserve, put $25,000 in, we were able to utilize, we hope successfully, the fact that we had some revenue there with one of the applications that Director Palace has put in for a special event strategy, so that's where it doesn't hurt sometimes to have a little pot if these opportunities come up from the province, whether it's Trillium, Department of Culture, different opportunities, it is nice sometimes if we can readily identify a small pot of money that we need for matching funds, and that's a perfect example, that special event strategy, if we are successful in getting the grant money, that's where it would come out of this reserve. Whether council wishes to delay it and say that the choice would be to have $25,000 on hold, so we would only put the $25,000 in, if we were successful and we pulled it out for that strategy, then you're replenishing the reserve, but there is some merit sometimes to having some of those around for exactly these type of things, because it is part of the mandate that we, you know, council gave us to try to increase the number of things that we're doing, the number of events, the number of spin-off for our community, and it is nice to have a little bit of money every now and then to be able to tap into when programs, and I look at the RED, the former RED program, it's slightly been renamed, but the Rural Economic Development Funding, which allows you to get some specific strategies in place we may not have looked at before.
Okay, thank you CIO, fair enough. Thank you, your worship.
Okay. Any comments? Yeah, I think the initial decision, it's actually econom, sorry, it's economy spelt wrong there, the initial decision we made to earmark some money for this moving forward, pardon the same pun, is, to me, still valid. It's, I realize it's $25,000, but I think that, I wouldn't, let's put it in a nice way, I wouldn't do this if I didn't think it could be utilized efficiently, and with Director Palace and his team that's in place, frankly, if they weren't there, I probably wouldn't go with it, but I have faith and understanding that they're working on a lot of different things, and I have no doubt that we'll see things we've never seen before that could easily take care of this. And the other side of this too is, well, I know that, you know, I've been discussing with the town of Penetangwahin, and they've been using County of Simcoe for their economic development. Now, of course, they have a much larger commercial and industrial portion than we do, but they've been quite happy with that. So there are opportunities for us in terms of economic development, and I'm okay to put the $25,000 in for 2026. Okay, any further discussions, economic development? Okay, well drainage loans, we don't have anything to worry about there right now, we have no applications, nobody's come to us on those, okay? Well, Director, thank you very much, Deputy CIO, if you want to give us a summary, and that's right in front of us, we'll go through that.
Yeah, a very quick summary, so the total net 2026, that should say in the commentary 2026 operating budget, the cost to the municipal tax levy is 15.4 million, which represents 78% of the municipal tax levy, which is an increase of 10.74%, or 1.489 million over 2025. And as noted earlier, most of this increase, as you have seen, as we went through, is attributed to OPP costs, increase of the debt financing reserve allocation, remuneration adjustments from pre-approved and recommended adjustments, as well as the reduction in the available surplus that we've estimated at the time of writing this report as compared to 2025's budget.
Okay, any comments? Deputy Mayor, please.
Thanks through you, Chair, to the deputy CIO, just as we've gone through the budgets, I've seen many lines where it said, you know, the reductions to the insurance pool, so I just want to go back to the benefits of joining the county pool, so if we're taking some of those funds and creating an insurance reserve, what's the benefit of having this type of reserve, and would that reserve then cover things like deductibles for insurance claims?
Yep, that's a great question, thank you for that. It's exactly what the reserve is intended to do, is to help cover the cost of unexpected deductibles that we haven't planned for. We do typically have a little bit of room built into the budget, but not much if there's some exceptional circumstances, but it also helps to combat any sort of unprepared-for increases in insurance if the market becomes hard, and our broker has to go out and start looking for, you know, alternative sources, and they are coming back with a higher increase, we can help mitigate that impact to the tax at that time.
Great, and follow-up if I may?
Of course.
So I think when we first started hearing about the insurance pool and we were going through the process, I believe we said we would start to create this reserve over a period of three years, and once that three years was built in to that reserve, to help smooth out just in case we have any major catastrophic losses and have to put in these major deductibles of like $25,000 and stuff like that, we would then see those benefits now offset the levy, once those reserve fund, or that reserve fund is built up over a period of three years, is that correct? Is that what they had told us to do as best practice?
So that is what they had recommended, there was no formal direction provided by council to us directly as staff to do that, but that's why we're recommending it within this budget. I do know that the county pool is also doing a very similar structure on that end as well, so we are really putting in place some avenues to ensure that there's no major impact, you know, as years go on, as we've seen in the past, where we had some really large increases that we weren't prepared for.
That's great, and just one further supplemental, would an insurance reserve budget be of benefit to us, just so we can maintain tracking, much like what we've done with the emergency sort of fund, I realize it's a net zero budget, but it just helps us track kind of things, I'm just wondering if an actual reserve budget's line for this would help us track any such losses that we may incur from insurance claims?
Great question. In my opinion, I don't think it's necessary for this, for this type of process, we do have, if council does approve, tracking this in its own reserve, staff can definitely do that, and we do come to council with quarterly reports, and we do talk about any significant impacts to, into the township, so this would be one of those things, if we are seeing a major deductible that's happened that we weren't prepared for, we certainly would bring that to council's attention at the time, but I don't think it's necessary to set up a separate budget to track these once-in-a-while type situations.
That's great, thanks Deputy CIO.
Good. Councillor Holka, please.
Yeah, I guess his worship could answer this, possibly. So we're covering ourselves as far as the airport goes, is there anything mandating Penetangwahin and Midland to do the same thing regarding insurance?
I'm sorry, what's your insurance question?
So, we're doing what we need to do to protect ourselves as far as the airport goes regarding our 22% ownership.
Yep.
Is there anything in the memorandum of agreement or the partnership that would mandate the other two partners, Penetangwahin and Midland, to do the same thing as far as insurance coverage or protection?
CIO, maybe you can speak to insurance protection, but the insurance, I think that two different things, Deputy Mayor speaking of, I believe that they'd be incumbent, you know, they'd be required to have insurance and operate just like we do under the Municipal Act, but CIO, if you've got anything you can add on that, I don't know.
Through you, so the Huron Airport, my understanding, actually carries their own insurance, and we get what was in the, was our portion of the invoice for it, so our 22%, I would assume in Penetangwahin and Midland's budget, that they may show it as a separate line, but it should be in what their allocation of invoice to, to cover that, because the commission itself is responsible for it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought you were mentioning, you were referring to the actual corp, the town or the municipal, Penetangwahin or Midland, yeah, we do, yes, we do have, the Huron Airport Commission does have its own insurance, we have our director's insurance that is covered and paid for on a commensurate basis.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments? Okay, great, well, that's the budget. Deputy CIO and staff, thank you so much, I know it's a lot of work, a huge amount of work, I know, we're going to go on in a minute, but I just, you know, I'm sure that, just want to make sure that we express our thanks for all the hard work you put into this, so I know it's an awful lot of work, and we appreciate everything you've done. Deputy CIO?
Thank you very much for that, it's a lot of work from everybody.
And everybody, yes.
I believe, councillor, you had wanted to jump to the funding gap tracking list to talk about the operation portion of the funding gap.
Yes, that was our next step, yeah, as if we take a, we're going to take a quick look, and Deputy Mayor, what page is that?
Okay, it's on page 358.
Yeah, we're going to be in 358, and then I said, well councillor Brunel, or councillor Walnut will be here tomorrow, so we could start with asset management, that way Marley can show up, she knows when to show up, and then we will go through asset management and then capital, and any other, any other discussions moving forward tomorrow. Okay, great, so we're not making any decisions, but certainly it's open for discussion right now, so.
If I may, I'll just explain how the spreadsheet works for those that may be watching at home. So at the very top of the list, we have our proposed municipal tax rate increase and blended tax rate increase, so 5.72% and then 3.95% for the blended, and then total budget that we would require to be funded from that is $19,587, which is made up of operating of 15.354 million and draft capital of 4.232 million, so that's not gross, that's the net, and that's the cost to the taxpayer. So at this point in time, the budget is balanced, however, as you can see, we do have several items on the operational portion, including that high-level surplus estimate that hasn't been built into the best budget of $169,782, so that's to the good, but then we have the proposed business case of the student labors in Recreation and Special Events of $42,000 for the first year. We've got funding to organizations, we've got the Child and Youth Advisory Centre, Simcoe Muskoka, and from what I understand, per you mayor, is that that $10,000 is being, I guess, paid through the Simcoe County.
Yeah, why don't you go through all of them?
Sure.
And the funding organizations, and then I'll kick off the discussion, I have a couple of updates for council.
Okay, the next one is MTM Conservation, they are asking for $7,500 plus an in-kind supply of 911 blades, which is about $480 more dollars. The Guest House Shelter is asking for $5,000. Physician recruitment, they had actually only asked for $10,000 when last year we gave them 12, so there's a reduction of 2,000, and then Bay Shore Seniors is requesting an additional $4,000. So that's everything on the operational portion of the funding gap list.
Okay, so, and then just to clarify on your sheet here, line 18 and 19, those numbers are reflecting the first line 26, right? So I just want people to start thinking that we're at a 2.65, I'm sorry, 2.65%.
Okay, I'll explain that, I didn't realize.
Okay, so just tell people, don't disregard those numbers there for right now.
Yeah, so, yeah, disregard that, that shouldn't be shown.
Okay, yeah, my update on the, just to council, and Deputy Mayor is aware of this already, in terms of the funding to organizations, this is purely for information, we can discuss it, the County of Simcoe, there was a presentation made by Child, sorry, Child and Youth Advocacy Centre of Simcoe Muskoka, the, it was a decision, a decision made at County of Simcoe by us, by the, by the upper, the lower tiers, the 16 of us, that the County of Simcoe would provide $54,000 on behalf of the lower-tier governments, doesn't preclude us from giving them more, but it was a unanimous decision, I think, by the mayors, the deputy mayors, that that would suffice, so, and that's, I think, a pretty sizable, personally, I think for a first-time ask, albeit a worthy cause, and certainly a worthy cause, but it was, it's a pretty good funding opportunity. And the other one that came up for discussion was Guest House Shelter. This is a new charity for us, and again, it's just, but the County of Simcoe does support this, and so it's, we're trying to be a little more transparent, but also a little more investigative ourselves to make, not that we don't, if you want, if the lower tier and the upper tier funding models, who's doing what, in the past, sometimes we haven't always, you know, some people, some municipalities have, some haven't, so I'm just throwing it out there for council that they do receive, I don't know the exact number, I won't, and I don't, I think I know, but I don't know for sure, but the Guest House Shelter does receive funding, significant funding from the, from the County of Simcoe, and the Child, Youth and Advocacy Centre is being provided with $54,000 on behalf of the lower tier by the upper-tier government, so. So that's there for discussion, we can, you know, if you want to talk about it now or tomorrow, but that was the update. Councillor Brunel, please.
Thank you. Is it possible for tomorrow that we get that number from the County of Simcoe, how much they fund the guest shelter, is that possible?
Oh.
Thank you, yeah, we can, we can reach out and find out.
Can we reach out to Mina?
Yeah.
Maybe, yeah, that'd be great. Yeah. Actually, it might, and while you're, it might be worth to get the number from this town of Midland as well, given that it's in Midland, if that's possible.
If they do.
Oh, they do, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion on these items? I'll start with Deputy Mayor and then councillor Holka.
Thanks through you. In regards to the physician recruitment request of $10,000 and the fact that they're asking for 2,000 less, knowing that they've really ramped up physician recruitment by re-establishing kind of the local committee from all of our participating municipalities, do we know why they're asking for less instead of to keep it flat from last year?
Tate paid 10 last year.
Oh, it's because, okay, the others only, they pay less, okay, so I'm trying to keep it even, okay, thank you.
Councillor Holka, please.
Yes, thank you, your worship, through you. Regarding the Bay Shore Seniors, they did say that they were increasing their use, their members' facilities as well, so I would just, I would support giving them $4,000, because they're, they're trying to, they're trying to increase their activities, so, you know, the whole, the township isn't, our township isn't footing the whole bill, they're trying to do it themselves as well.
And I believe, on my recollection, it was a one-time, like it's a seed money type of, to go after membership and to expand membership, to be used that way, if I'm, that was my understanding, if, I don't have that note in front of me, but I believe it was a one-time to expand membership. a one-time to expand membership. Sorry, I'm just, I'm glancing through here to see if there's actual mention of one-time funding.
No, it doesn't.
I don't think, I don't believe it does.
We're asking council to increase our cash donation, this will bring the total annual cash contribution.
Yeah, okay, so, verbatim, we must create a strategy to achieve this goal to recruiting a younger demographic to facilitate future sustainability, something we cannot just leave, currently, the township contributes annually six thousand fifty-two dollars in form of a check, we're asking council to increase our cash donation by the amount of four thousand dollars, this will bring the annual cash contribution from the township to ten thousand and fifty-two dollars. Currently receives one thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars in in-kind services, which is a total contribution of seven thousand three hundred and forty dollars annually. This rate was established by Seniors Active Living Center Act, established in 2017, requires all S A L C organizations that are not run by municipalities to contribute a minimum of twenty percent of their twenty, two thousand seven, two thousand eight net annual cost in maintaining and operating the program. Although this funding has not been received or revised since two thousand seven, two thousand eight, our cost to offer, our programming has increased substantially. This funding would be divided between programming, equipment, and supplies, so I stand somewhat corrected in that, I believed it was, at the bottom, they said strong emphasis on marketing and promotion, to highlight the benefits of being a longtime member of our club, this would, believe will result in increased membership and a sense of ownership as time passes. The required, requested increase includes hiring qualified, highly motivated, and passionate instructors, I do remember that part, okay. For consideration, also given we have another seniors organization in the community as well, that should be, I believe, considered in kind.
Yeah, we're just.
You're working the number?
Sorry, your worship, we're just trying to pull up where she, the lady that did deputation, had said that they were increasing their membership fees, but we're unsure of from what to what.
Okay. CIO? CIO Lam?
Sorry, Director Palace just whispered in my ear, so this would likely, if council approved, it would require an annual approval, I don't, this is above and beyond what the basic agreement would be, and so, you know, council, if they decided, it would, it wouldn't automatically then turn into that is the new contribution level, it would be something that would have to be talked about each year.
You certainly put a pre-qualifier on it, pre-qualifier or a contingent requirement, if that's something that council wanted to do. Deputy Mayor, please.
Thanks through you, so just doing a little bit of math here, they're currently charging forty dollars per year, or thirty dollars per year for membership, I know Georgian Shores is forty if paid by March thirty-first, fifty if it's paid after April first, sometimes it's about increasing your fees, there's two senior clubs, I would, I would expect that they would be the same price, that would make up their four thousand dollars, or get pretty darn close to it, for that annual contribution that they want it raised by, I'm just throwing that out there for discussion.
Again, sorry, we're not, we're not making, I think, I want to wait till Counselor Walmet's here, but to make a final decision, and then, you know, we don't have to decide today.
No, it's good.
Counselor Burnell, please.
Yeah, I tend to agree with Deputy Mayor here, like, if they can align their membership fees to the similar club that's in our municipality, we're already giving seven thousand three hundred and forty dollars a year with all funding, including in-kind, so I'd have a hard time with the additional four thousand at this time.
Thank you, Counselor Burnell. Any further discussion, counsel? Deputy CIO, I don't think we have any other ops items on this, right? On the funding gap?
No, we don't.
So, okay, so let's, last, we don't have any other ops items on the funding gap, Counselor Burnell?
Yeah, just one question, through you, Chair, to, Director Palace, item number two, it says total first-year costs of forty-two thousand, do we anticipate increase in costs in the second year?
Director Palace, with regards to this.
I can, I can help answer that question, thank you. So, that increases this year's cost, and then obviously, if we do an index for a minimum wage increase, we would index these wages as well, because they're part of the student wages, so anything that's legislated, plus that COLA adjustment, would definitely be impacted on future budgets. The seven thousand dollar vehicle rental fee that's included in this cost, I would anticipate that we would still require that as well, you can answer that.
Counselor?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Okay, any last thoughts, anybody? Seems like a good start, a good place to stop, again, thanks so much for everything, appreciate it. Move by Deputy Mayor. And Counselor Burnell. The meeting recesses at four twenty-two P M. To reconvene tomorrow at twelve-thirty P M. Hold those in favor? Great, motion is carried, anybody online? Thank you very much for watching today, and we'll be back at twelve-thirty tomorrow, go through capital and have more discussions, so thank you very much.